Good evening. We'll begin with a place of allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Colepack, here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Fargo Public Library, the North Dakota Job Service Staff is offering more onsite walk-in services this month. North Dakota Job Service Staff will visit St. James Carlson Library, or Dr. James Carlson Library on Tuesday, October 4th from 2:00 to 4:00. These sessions are free of charge and no registration is required. The library's October session, A Pause for Reading, where kids can read to a dog at the downtown Main Library, is Saturday, October 8th. The dogs are from Therapy Pets at the Red River Valley. The 2022 One Book One Community Reading Project title selection is Louise Erkrich Pulitzer Prize-winning novel, Pulitzer Prize novel, The Night Watchman. A community-wide reading challenge and related events featuring presentation, films, exhibits, and book discussions start in September. The author visits his plan for October 27th at Concordia College. Every three years, the city Fargo features new art on the illuminated panels on both the external and internal commission chambers within City Hall. Tonight, we will showcase the new pieces of art in those spaces. The art proposals were solicited through an RFP by the city's Arts and Culture Commission in May, resulting in 29 eligible proposals. A five-person panel composed of artists and arts advocate reviewed the proposals. The city awarded the contract of exterior art to Brent Lysine for his work representing the theme of Fargo, past, present, and future. The city awarded a contract to Troy Becker for his work representing the themes of recreation, arts, and entertainment, agriculture, and the city of parks for incorporation into the interior of city commission chambers. The external and internal panels were installed with last week by the office sign company and custom graphics. Now, let's enjoy this video which showcases the installation process. For especially proud that in the chambers, we have Roger Maris in one of the panels. Last Wednesday, New York Yankee Aaron Judge tied Roger Maris for the All-American League's single-season homerun record. Members of the Maris family were in attendance as Judge joined the MLB homerun royalty. Tonight, I have a Maris jersey behind me as we commemorate Fargo's homerun king. I'm also incredibly proud that we put the panel in our chambers. Like to give a round of applause for the artist that came up with this, and thanks for the Arts Commission.[286.11][286.11](applause) Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving Item 3 from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 19, 2022 Regular Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 36 excluding Item 3, which has been moved to the Regular Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public speaking comments, at this time, we have Jaclyn Dotson-Rod. Three minute is 2.5.
Okay. I'll speak fast.
Okay.
October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I am a survivor of domestic violence. I am called a survivor because of the simple fact that I am alive. The survivor community in Fargo is a diverse one. We come from all manner of backgrounds, but we share one thing in common. We were victims for a moment, and we have become survivors for a lifetime. But tonight, I want to tell you about a member of our community who did not survive. Her name is Denise Anderson. In August 2019, her life was tragically cut short as a result of domestic violence. The man convicted of murdering her started with smaller crimes of stalking and harassment, which Denise dutifully reported to the police. The police did their part and filed reports, however, not one of these reports resulted in any charges filed against Denise's murderer. Knowing the law would do nothing to stop him, he continued to harass Denise. She was left on her own to try and deal with an aggressive man without the support she should have had from our legal system. Denise's surviving loved ones have strived to make changes in public policy that would have been helpful to her. The North Dakota Century Code on Domestic Violence has now been amended, and the city needs to make an amendment as well. It may be too late to save Denise, but countless more women and children in our community are currently in the grips of domestic violence without the supports they need to get out. One support we need is an update to City Ordinance 10-0322. I am asking you to make a change of just one word: intent. As the law currently reads, a person is guilty of harassment only if there is provable intent to frighten or harass another. I have spoken with several attorneys on this subject, including attorneys with the city of Fargo. It has been explained to me that the matter of intent is nearly impossible to prove in court. Hence, many cases of harassment are not prosecuted, even when they are reported to the police. Countless more cases are not reported at all, and if this is how victims are treated, why would we bother? Victims who go through the process of reporting are often told that their matter will not be pursued in court, and the violence usually escalates. A predator who is emboldened to stalk and harass because they will never go to court for their crimes is essentially issued an invitation to continue. Our current system not only fails to deeter bad behavior of predators, but makes the situation even more dangerous for domestic violence survivors. My ask of you today is simple: please, remove the word "intent" from City Ordinance 10-0322. Please, stop empowering predators to escalate their violence. Please, give our city attorneys the verbiage they need to properly prosecute criminals who conduct these intrusive acts. And please, consider what a difference this might have made to Denise Anderson and the many people who knew and loved her. Thank you for your time.[515.01][515.01](applause)
Thank you for keeping close to the time.
Wes Filome, he/him/his pronouns, I'd like to start by saying, long live George Floyd and Anuay Magic. Although I enjoy coming to City Hall for the 32nd Avenue construction updates, I would much rather be at home relaxing, but as long as policing in our community continues on the path that it has, I have to continue to speak up. Because in communities where police departments lack sufficient leadership and training, Black and Brown people suffer at a much higher rate, including death. And faith, for the last three months, has been ringing the bell regarding the public safety downtown, directly to the chief and other leadership, and nothing has been done. I believe we're moving upwards of double-digit people being wounded downtown. It's only a matter of time before somebody dies. Weeks back, Fargo PD did a joint effort with the state troopers and other local agencies, and they had a visible presence downtown. There were not very many lights flashing, but they were visible. We spoke with Lieutenant Olfelt and told him that we appreciated the visibility there. He told us, it's not going to be the norm. Friday, it was the same thing. You all heard about the incident at Rhombus, guys. Saturday, downtown Fargo was an absolute war zone. There were traffic jams of police officers, a state trooper in front of a Fargo police officer behind an unmarked car. There were lights flashing everywhere. At midnight, when I was leaving in front of Fort Knox, a state trooper hit a U-turn, pulled over a truck. By the time I got to Main Avenue, the car behind me got pulled over by Fargo PD. When I made a right to head towards Wells Fargo, another cop car had somebody pulled over. This is not a solution. It's not going to be consistent. It's not strategic. What you all are going to do is kill the business downtown, and you're going to put a ton of people in jail. It's not sustainable. And then, you see Greg Shieldberger and the Fargo, you guys have a cameraman downtown, and you're making propaganda out of people going to jail. Fargo downtown is not much safer this week than it was last week. You all need to find a sustainable solution to keeping people safe on the weekends. Thank you.[678.11][678.11](applause)
You know the rules. We don't clap in the chambers, and if we continue, we'll be escorted out. If we do not, that's not the conduct we have. Respect is what you need to have faith, so have respect. Christopher Cone.
(inaudible)
I did too. Christopher Cone.
Well, I was planning on talking about the Consent Agenda item about the Wildlife Management Program, but has it been pulled so it won't be voted on tonight?
It's pulled.
Okay, well, I'll just mention it a little bit anyways. And, you know, what I'm still here for is the 350 people who signed the petition to stop the program and not have it restarted in a new form, and apparently with more freedoms and less restrictions. Because now, it's not going to be administered by the city or the police, it's just going to be administered by a private archery program. And so, you know, the item that I was going to ask about here was the age restriction. So, there had been an age restriction in place for the past decade and a half that the program was operating, and that was 18 years of age or older. And then, that was removed, and the new writing said it would be according to North Dakota Game and Fish Regulation that would guide it, but that's not clear, because there aren't any age restrictions on the type of hunt this will be. It's a special hunt. So, and another issue with this hunt is, it's been now removed from the two river parks to the south of Fargo. Those have been removed of the program, and those are the lower-populated areas. So, the issue, this, when this issue was introduced a year ago, it was introduced by the chief of police as both a safety issue, as well as, in addition to thinking about the low call rates that have been coming from it, so that it wasn't particularly useful for what it was saying it was trying to do. And I don't think the safety issue has gone away. I think most of the hunters and everyone else involved thought there were no safety issues, and so they made very small changes, such as putting lights on the end of arrows so they can locate lost arrows, because one person did step on one of these very sharp arrows. It just got on the bottom of his shoe, so, thank you.[860.32][860.32](noise)
We've got Item 38. It's going to be a continued one anyway, so there won't be a public hearing on it, but there's a continued 101722 Special Assessment List for Business Improvement District Fees. Is there a motion to continue it till Monday, October 17?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to continue A and B.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item C, Hearing on Dangerous Building Located at 2315 Second Avenue South, continued from 9622. I think, Sean, you said we have somebody online that's on this as well?
Yes, I do believe the current owner may be online. I'm not sure if she's there or not. We did send her the information, so she could attend virtually if she needed to. As the mayor said, this is a dangerous building public hearing for 2315 Second Avenue South. This is a 988-square-foot, single-story wood-framed structure with a basement and a two-stall-attached garage. Sarah Sabo is the current owner, and she may be attending virtually. It was built in 1958, and the taxes are up to date and paid. There have been 26 calls to service on this property from 11/7/2018 to 9/26/2022. There's a list of damages here, including squirrel infestation, furnaces inoperable, you know, deteriorated areas in the exterior and interior, loose bricks, evidence of squatters, and just some general graffiti and junk around the property. The deputy assessor has determined that this does not meet the 50% threshold, and that is one of the stipulations. The building appears to meet seven of the 10 criteria, and I don't have the current water or power turn-off dates. Here's the timeline of events for this building. The inspections on the interior next year were conducted on 6/27. The notice was posted on 6/29. The building was secured by the owner on 8/1, and then re-secured again on the weekend of 8/6 to 8/8, because there had been some squatter activity. On 8/10, the Notice of Dangerous Building was reposted. On 8/12, met with the city assessor on-site for the 50% inspection. The deputy assessor on 8/15 determined the building does not exceed the 50% of true and full value. On 8/21, the Notice of Dangerous Building Hearing orders show cause was sent to the mayor and city commission. On 9/21, the Notice of Dangerous Building Hearing and orders show cause posted and sent. And then, on 10/3, we're having the hearing. Here's some pictures of the structure. You can see it's generally not in very good condition. There's garbage and things that have been cleaned up for the most part at this point. The garage, in the last picture, actually, the header for the garage is pretty much deteriorated and gone. This is just showing some of the general pictures of the roofline, and where there has been some activity. The bricks for the chimney are coming apart and falling down. Like I said, the garbage has pretty much been abated at this point. Just showing, there's some structural shifting there on the corner in that one picture. The windows are in poor shape. There's some plastic that's coming off from there as an attempt to weather seal them. This is just the general condition as we did inspections throughout the building. And here's some supports and stuff in the basement for one of the structural walls. You can see that they're starting to fail, and that there's some issues by the gray marks on the bricks there, showing that there's been some deterioration in the foundation on that corner. Just more general pictures of things. The bathrooms are in disarray. There was garbage everywhere, you know, electrical issues, peeling paint. And I'll stand for any questions on this property.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the city commission regarding this dangerous building?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, we are actually scheduled to close on this house on the 15th of October. From my understanding of talking to Mr. Aradnik, is that you guys would be looking to have this demoed by the 15th. I know this is on their list to demo in the houses that we'll be selling, so that is our plan. If we can get an extension, just barring anything that falls through, but at this point, we're scheduled to close on the 15th.
Sean, you want to speak to that?
Yes, right now, we have a scheduled demo. Date is November 14th of 2022. If we have assurances and a permit in place for the demolition of the building, we could extend that out. We'd bring it back to commission and ask for an extension at that point, but as of right now, we would like to keep that November 14th date, just so we know there's going to be some kind of action done on it as soon as possible. And unless they can bring us, you know, adequate information to bring to the commission and ask for an extension, I would like to keep that date.
Is there any also in the public who wish to speak regards to this house? A closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, and then I have a question.
Commissioner Preston.
Sean, can you go back to the timeline slide?
Sorry, it'll take me a second.
There you go. So, what was the gap there for almost a year?
There's been a bit of a gap. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one of the, on 10/3/2022, it should not be, it should be 2022, not 2021.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's maybe the gap you're seeing. I just put in the information on it. I apologize.
Okay. So, it really was only, you all got this done within four months, which is great.
It's been something that's been on our radar for a while, and we've been trying to work with the owners and things. The inspectors have been kind of staying back from doing the dangerous building stuff, but when it came to a point where we figured we couldn't do it, or we couldn't let it go anymore, we started the dangerous building process. There was a tenant in there prior to this, and that's why we were kind of extending things out and letting things play out to see where things would go with it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We have had a lot of work, and have been working with the inspectors over the last, you know, year or so on many different properties since we've taken over for my father. So, I think that the office can vouch for us that we have done, you know, as much work and has been as compliant as possible. It's just been difficult. We're hoping that, you know, with the closing on the 15th, that everything will be taken care of by the 14th of November. But hoping if something does go wrong and we have to, you know, get it out, that we can take out a demo permit and then get an extension, so we can bring it back at that point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colepack?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item D, Hearing on Dangerous Building Located at 71412th Street North.
Okay. This is 71412th Street North Dangerous Building Public Meeting. This property is an 1,152-square-foot, single-story, plus-basement, wood-framed structure with a detached garage. Thomas, not sure how to pronounce his last name, Nan Cavill, is the owner. It was built in 1903, and the taxes are up to date and paid. Damages that we have observed are accumulation of trash and rubbish, water damage throughout the house. There's no water service at this point. The gutters are damaged on the house, peeling paint on the exterior, which could lead to rot. Evidence of squatter activity, holes in the garage roof, and the rear yard has an accumulation of junk and overgrowth. And it does meet, it appeared to meet, seven of the 10 criteria for a dangerous building. Inspection of the, or here's the timeline. On 10/25/21, the inspection of the interior and the exterior after a call from a nursing home, because the individual that owned this property did go into a nursing home at this time, and that's when the action started on this property. It was posted as a dangerous building on 10/29/2021. In 11 of 2021, property owner signed property over to the United States Savings and Loan, who I do believe held the mortgage on it. On 12/21/2021, the current owners purchased the property, so this property has been sold through the process. On 12/22/2021, the current owner allowed us to come in and take a look at the interior of the property. On 1/31/2022, current owner applied for demolition permit for the garage. On 2/7/2022, permits approved and issued, and on 8/8/2022, the permits expired. On 9/6, a meeting was held with the current owner and city Fargo staff to discuss the future of this property. On 9/8, memo was sent to the commission for Consent Agenda item to set up the public hearing for this property. On 9/19, excuse me, I accidentally put in an extra date in there. Hearing was set by commission for October 3rd. The Notice of Dangerous Building was posted and served via certified mail on 9/19/2022. And on 10/3, the public hearing is being held. Here's the current state of the property. The owner did come in and clear out a lot of the trees that you see cut off there, and a lot of the garbage and stuff, because there was squatter activity at that point, but the property is still in very bad shape. This is kind of some of the stuff that was out there prior to them cleaning a lot of it up. And just general pictures, the third picture in is a picture of the garage, the one that is extremely deteriorated and needs to come down as soon as possible. They did have a demo permit for that one, but they did not do anything with that permit at that point. This is just the interior of the building and what it looks like. A lot of the things inside, some of them were cleaned out. We could not gain access to the basement because of all the garbage and things that were in the basement at that time, so there are no pictures of the basement. And I'll stand for any questions.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this building? Anyone present who wished to speak? A closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions, Sean? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item E, Application for Class F/A Alcoholic Beverage License for Port of Rialto. Doing business as Port of Rialto, located at 4323 45th Street South, Suite 101. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant is applying for a Class F/A license, which is a food and alcohol license in a restaurant. It does allow a physical bar. The food sales need to exceed the alcohol sales. This is the $100,000 license that we have, and we've done the background check and gone to liquor control with this, and it comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval.
Is there anyone present who wished to address the city commission regarding this application? Anyone present who wished to speak? If not, we're closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item F, Application by Roosevelt Family Loss for Payment in Lieu of Tax Exemption Pilot for the project to be located at 711 10th Avenue North, which the application will use market rate multifamily housing and property management services, continued from 8/22/22, 9/6/22, and 9/19/22 Regular Meetings. Jim Gilmore to explain.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll start with a little bit of background on this particular site, as well as these two buildings to the right of it. For those of you that were on the commission early 2020, you had looked at creating a tax increment financing district and renewal district. The developer was looking at developing this site along with this large site. Because of COVID and inability to get financing, they decided to develop this site. They were going to tear down and rehab, or redevelop this site. However, then there was a fire. They went through the dangerous building process somewhere, so you may have seen this site before. So, where we are right now is after this house burned up and the seven apartments, it's been demolished again as a dangerous building. Now, there's a proposal to turn this into row homes similar to the ones to the right. These, I believe, are three-unit structures, and so there would be 12 buildings on the site, essentially take these two, put them here, and another two up here. So, that would be what the site plan would be like. The lot is extraordinarily large. It's 100 feet wide and 290 feet deep, almost a full block deep, so it's really, and it's zoned MR3, so it's zoned to allow multifamily. You look at the adjacent properties, there's, again, these rowhouse apartments here, there's an apartment building here, 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 so you have a lot of multifamily to the east and west of the site. The applicant applied for under Economic Development Incentives Committee for a property tax exemption that would last 10 years, the first five years at 100%, and the second five years at 50%. The present value of that is about $250,000, and in the early years, they'd save about $44,000 a year in property taxes. It went through the Economic Development Incentives Committee. That committee is recommending approval. It had been reviewed by PFM, our financial advisor, who found that this particular housing project would not be feasible without that incentive. However, the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association did send us an email expressing concern, and they did not feel that its development was compatible with their neighborhood. Attachment in your packet includes the comments that they had sent, and the Attached in your packet includes the comments that they had sent, and, uh, the development agreement is also attached, so the, the recommendation is for approval of the payment in lieu of taxes for, for ten years. I believe the developer is here, maybe, uh, wished to come up and, uh, address what, uh, you know, their plans for the property, what they'll do if they don't get this, and I believe a representative from the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association is also here, so maybe have the developer come up first.
Hello. Uh, my name is Ryan Downs. This is, uh, Brandon Rayboyn. So we've been working on this development for about a year and a half. And as you can see, it's a unique lot that, um, is zoned MR three. And with that, um, you know, we would put twenty units on this property, but with the tax pilot incentive, we could put twelve units that are a little bit more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. And with the tax pilot program, we can, we can do that under the U M U standards, so it'd have a little bit more, uh, upscale feel to it. We talked about doing three bedrooms, two bathrooms. We pivoted, uh, the front entrances to face the street side, so it looks more residential and has the feel to it. Uh, this, this would not be possible without the pilot program, so if we did not get this, we would have to put something a little bit larger, um, on the, on that lot. So we've dedicated some green space on here. We've, um, plotted out a playground area, made it get more appealing to a family, uh, dynamic, and so, um, yeah, I don't know, Brandon, if you have anything else to add to it?
Yeah, really, at the end of the day, we're just looking for something that'll fit the neighborhood and also be economically reasonable. Um, it's pretty difficult to, uh, build anything that's affordable housing on a, a lot this size. So really, at the end of the day, we're trying to kind of meet in the middle as best as we can, knowing the different levels at play here, so.
Did you meet with the neighborhood at all, address their concerns? I think they had some concerns about where the, the, uh, doors were and how would have a feel or luck, uh, in the community?
Correct. So, so we'd met with, um, a few, I think we met with, uh, um, the, the neighborhood had some specific asks, I guess, and they didn't want to meet because they said, um, they've already met and talked through, um, their wishes with the, um, planning. And, and so they kind of said, just conform with, with what we'd already stated, I think. Um, so to that end, we were just going off that, that information. So we turned the units, added green space, we have a few different elevations of this, um, front facing to kind of conform with what they'd want. And then obviously with U M U standards, the, uh, the finishes are much higher, so we have to have seamless steel siding, you know, front veneers, um, nicer windows, all sorts of, you know, higher end than, uh, the traditional, you know, residential rental would be. And I do think there's a big demand for this type of product, given most rentals up there are hundred-year-old houses. This is a little nicer, refined product, so.
I think it's important to note that, uh, they didn't meet with the neighborhood directly, but they had met with the planning department. Uh, the original design had more of a flat front, um, against the street, didn't have these, uh, you know, windows and balconies as, as well as the, um, they mentioned them. Exterior materials are of higher quality.
Commissioners, have any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Preston.
So at two hundred and fifteen thousand per unit, um, what does that calculate down to per square footage, the cost?
Uh, gosh, I'd have to, I'd have to look at our math.
Okay. It's, it seems like it's a low-cost kind of project, um, so it would be helpful to know that. Uh, I certainly, I have a sense of what most apartments are costing per square foot. So, um, if you could somehow calculate that pretty quickly.
I, I think we have that in our pro forma, um, that we, we had done previously.
Do you know what it is, Jim?
It's the, uh, construction costs is roughly two point six million divided by twelve is.
Yeah, that's per unit, but I'm talking per square foot.
Yeah. I know the, the rent sits seventeen hundred a month. Let me see if it's.
I think we can ballpark it at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
So that is pretty low end.
And then, and then, um, land would obviously probably be just on top of that, but somewhere in there.
Okay.
Again, darted aboard.
So I have one other question, if I could. Um, Jim, the third-party review, I was trying to reconcile the numbers with, um, what's coming before us. It looks like they're different in some cases. When was the third-party review done and were there changes to the project after that?
Um, the third-party review was done just, uh, several months ago. Um, I think unfortunately I had sent the planning department the wrong financials from over a year ago, and they had a different planning consultant look at that. So, and I think there was a typo in the initial review we, that we cut in the draft where they thought the rent was like eleven hundred a month and really it's seventeen hundred a month.
And then secondarily, we, we added the U M U standards, uh, recently on top of that as well, because that's part of the pilot program, um, this new pilot program, so those are higher costs as well.
So what stimulates a redo on the third-party review?
Pardon me?
What stimulates a redo on the third-party review?
I didn't ask them to redo when the cost went up because the rents didn't come, if anything, the, it became less affordable. I guess I could do that.
Any other questions? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, as I recall, the U M U footprint boundaries go that far north.
Yeah, this is not U M U, this is MR three. What the planning department asked for was that the design requirements that are in the U M U uh, be put into the development agreement, even though it's not required by zoning.
Bear with me, but isn't the U M U the criteria locationally for pilots?
No, no longer. The Economic Development Incentive Committee changed in, in January and, and allows it in the, anywhere in the core neighborhoods now.
Anywhere in town or anywhere?
In the core neighborhood.
We voted on that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
It was to help on our core neighborhoods, John, I thought. Mr. Preston.
So the MR three zoning has been stated a few times here, but as I understand, um, it would be really difficult to put in a, I think you mentioned a twenty-three unit, uh, just because of the setback and the, and the lot lines and all of that. Am I correct?
Well, um. The zoning allows between eighteen to nineteen units if the parking is interior below. That's a rough calculation. So no, you couldn't go to twenty-three, but you could go to a eighteen or nineteen.
And even then, uh, you're talking underground parking?
Yeah, it would have to be below ground because of the open space.
And the cost of that would be probably quite a bit more, perhaps?
Perhaps not.
Yeah. So I, the point I'm trying to make here is that the MR three zoning is being used somewhat as a threat. Um, hmm, probably not real practical.
Well, uh, I can speak to that. So MR three zoning, correct if I'm wrong, you can go four or five stories high. So what we had is main floor slab, uh, parking with three stories above that, um, and an elevator to go to nineteen units or, or whatever with, uh, some flex spaces in there. So it's just a higher density model. We're not digging underground. Uh, it'd be slab upgrade with, uh, uh, prefab concrete on the main. Um, and, and we have renderings of that as well, but at the end of the day, this is just a better fit for the neighborhood. Um, the higher density is a slightly higher cost, but also has a much higher economies of scale, so.
And the neighborhood didn't want it that tall, so if you were to put parking on first floor and go four stories up, they would, they would object to that?
Yeah, they, they object to any multifamily in that area, so we're, we're trying to kind of meet in the middle, knowing it's a unicorn-type lot, um, but also try and develop something nice that I do think is needed there. Um, nicer housing is a, a pretty nice upside in that area with how many NDSU rentals are there that are dilapidated and older, so.
Mr. Strand.
Could somebody address how this fits with our core neighborhood plan?
I mean, I think it fits with the zoning. I defer to Nicole if she feels wants to comment on whether it fits with the core neighborhood plan. It does fit, I think, with some of the go twenty thirty and wanting this mixed-middle housing, so we don't just have, you know, five-story apartment buildings and single-family homes. This is sort of something in between.
Uh, thank you. Unfortunately, it's not a yes or no if it fits in the core neighborhood plan. I think the results you're seeing in the, in the neighborhood's comments is they want to see a deeper dive of the core neighborhood plans, future land use plan. They want to drill down to the lot-by-lot level. The core neighborhood plan, literally this lot is kind of sandwiched between multifamily or single-family, so it could go either way in terms of a future land use. Um, and so the results of the comments our staff saw with the, um, integrate, you know, the project came in front of us and with the integration of design standards, we thought we could get to a little higher value, a higher level of development, uh, and in your packet, you see the, the neighborhood's comments. I don't want to speak for them per se, but, um, um, you know, they are fatigued as, you know, hopefully they don't mind me saying that, but, you know, so they're really asking us as planners to put our best hat on, and we thought the best response to work with the application team that we have is to look at the design related to that. So that's not really a yes or no, unfortunately.
Any other questions, Nicole? Any other questions or discussion, my commission? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Strand.
Were we going to hear from the neighborhood representatives? I, I see Jim there. Were you going to speak to this? Okay. One last question, Mayor. Is, is this property, it's advertised for sale, is it?
Uh, no.
Okay, I thought it had been.
It, I think you have an old ad on Zillow to sell an eighteen-unit apartment building. That's maybe what some people have seen.
Oh, um, we had listed an apartment building from a few years ago to potentially do it, and then COVID happened, cost went up, and I, I didn't do anything with it, so that might be an old Zillow ad.
Good.
So I think one of the things important when you look at the neighborhood and what's around there, so you'll see some other apartments that don't have these type of amenities to it. And, uh, it, it, it just, it does not like the one right next to it. It's a straight wall with no windows in it. So I think as an attempt to at least move back into the neighborhood with some things the neighborhood wants. But I also know that, Jim, it's, it's sometimes you're getting rid of one single home and you're getting kind of this townhome thing. And infill has always been a problem for us in our core neighborhoods, and I concur with Nicole that that will be coming out of a core neighborhood study, and what are we going to do, almost block by block is, probably will have come out of that. But at this point, uh, it does fit with zoning that they could do this, and I think they've tried to accommodate the neighborhood with changes they made. The first drawing was not this way at all, so.
Correct.
Mr. Preston.
One more question. So the ownership, when the building was deemed dangerous and then burned, was it the same owners?
Yes, so I bought this building three years ago, um, with the plan to develop all three of those parcels, and phase one was those two, uh, three-unit row homes. And phase two was always this, and then in that interim, one of the tenants in the older building, um, was cooking some drugs in the basement and started a fire, as it was deemed, I believe. So, um, that was something that was deemed a dangerous building, and we booked Asplin to tear it down. They pled in COVID for two months in a row, and the city tore it down, and Asplin showed up the next day and said, there's no building here, so.
So the dangerous designation was after the fire, or before?
That was after the fire.
After.
Okay.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Just real quick, Mr. Chair, I, I just think it's a really challenging lot on top of that. It's not an easy, uh, to get anything to kind of mix with the, and there's, and the neighborhood is kind of a mix of buildings too. So I think they did, uh, the best they could, and I, I do prefer having townhouses versus a big apartment building. And so I do think that's the, that's my perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item thirty-nine, presentation of alternatives property located fourteen fifty-eight South River Road South. Nathan Berberum to explain. And just, I'm going to ask the commissioners, this isn't a public hearing, but it would be okay if the owner was able to address the commission after Nathan does his presentation? I have no objection. I would allow John to speak at that time. Go ahead, Nathan.
All right. Thank you Commissioners. Uh, tonight, we're here to discuss an update on property here at fourteen fifty-eight and what we've been doing here the last handful of years of going through some, uh, flood mitigation alternatives with the property owners, developing, as you'll see here shortly, quite a few different alternatives. First, though, I just wanted to show you guys what the current hundred-year floodplain is in this neighborhood, as well as this structure specifically. As you can see, the hundred-year floodplain is on the property and surrounds the structure.
Mr. Chair, can I just interrupt really quickly? Can you show that slide? To me, the key thing of this is the water plant is on the upper left hand of the picture, a- and that's, that's critical infrastructure. And in two thousand nine, Mayor, you were out there and I was out there, and that was, uh, that was an area that we almost lost, and we would have lost that. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, Nathan, but this, that's the, that is a critical infrastructure, one of the most important buildings in our whole city, so thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. So next slide here is, uh, illustrates another inundation area of what we have been evaluating, where we need levees and floodwalls throughout the entire city. So what this is representing is the post-diversion flow, which is thirty, thirty-seven feet through town, plus the appropriate freeboard. So we want to make sure that once the diversion is in place, we don't require any emergency levees or sandbags out there. So we want to make sure that we're identifying all these areas, and this neighborhood is one of those areas that we still need to wrap up with levees and floodwalls. So next few slides here are just some past flood flight photos. First one here is two thousand nine. Next one is two thousand ten. And then two thousand eleven. Uh, some more from two thousand eleven. And one more set of two thousand eleven. So now stepping into some of the alternatives. Uh, so back in November of two thousand sixteen, engineering brought to, uh, you guys, uh, recommended technical alignment at that time. It was approved by city commission at that point in November. However, it was, uh, reconsidered by the city commission, uh, early that following year. And at that meeting in January, city commission actually approved the removal of fourteen fifty-eight South River Road from that home acquisition list for this neighborhood. At that same meeting, the city commission also referred this property to the Fargo Historic Preservation Committee. And later that month in January, they did deem this property historically significant. Uh, shortly after the November two thousand sixteen commission meeting, we also did look at a very high-level, uh, concept of a flood wall behind the property. The blue line here on the aerial photo shows where that flood wall was theoretically located. Uh, the point of this exercise, though, is really to determine what would be the approximate cost of completing the flood wall behind the home. And at that point, we figured it was a little over two million dollars. Uh, fast forward a couple of years, after some conversations with the property owners, uh, we revised that flood wall concept, did a more detailed analysis on it, and updated that cost estimate, uh, based off of some feedback from a local contractor, uh, to try to better feel, you know, is this a feasible alternative to be able to construct a wall behind the home? And if so, what would the cost be? And at that point, uh, is again, right around that two million dollar cost. Uh, we also looked at a sheet-pile wall alternative at this time. Uh, this alternative was deemed not feasible due to the requirement of having to install soil anchors back into the riverbank, which would be underneath the building. So due to that, we did not carry this alternative any further. Uh, after that, uh, the property owners actually hired their own engineer to look at a few different flood wall alternatives. Uh, the first alternative is a drilled shaft footing. So historically, the city of Fargo, all our floodwalls are a spread footing or a inverted T. So it's a, a wide footing that's buried under the ground. Drilled shafts are instead long, you know, exactly what they say they are. Drilled shafts going down deep into the ground to create that structural integrity for the wall. Uh, this is an option that the city has never used for floodwalls previously, but I believe this engineering firm used it in Valley City previously. So it has been used somewhat locally within the region and is definitely a viable alternative. At that time, their engineer estimated this was just shy of that two million dollar cost, so. So here's a profile view of what that, uh, footing would look like, and it's, yeah, just a long drilled shaft down where versus, oops. Our footings are more of a wide spread footing that way. Another alternative they looked at was using our standard spread footing, but instead moving the flood wall away from the floodway, FEMA floodway, putting it out in that area. Uh, a full geotechnical and hydraulic analysis would be required if this alternative was carried forward, uh, due to encroaching into the floodway. FEMA wants to make sure that we are not impacting the hundred-year water surface elevations. Uh, however, the. are not impacting the hundred-year water surface elevations. However, this alternative was not carried forward any further due to it being the most costly alternative of a little closer to three million dollars. The reason for the higher cost here is previously our flood wall was located at the floodway line, and as you can see, the further you go down the riverbank, the flood wall height grew quite a bit, and with the wall getting higher, the footing also had to become wider too to support any water loading up against it. So after those couple of alternatives were developed, then we, the city contracted with that same engineering firm to further refine alternative one. Our contract looked at a heavier or higher li- level of design, a more detailed survey, including the actual river channel itself, so that way we could do a full geotechnical evaluation. And we also coordinated with a couple of different contractors, local contractors here, to gain some of their feedback on construction feasibility, as well as have them help us develop some cost estimates for this alternative as well. From those conversations with those contractors, we updated the cost estimate with a range of two-point-one to three-point-four million. So it depended on the varying levels of the contractor's comfort level with this project and their level of risk acceptance. But so reality, maybe the cost estimate's somewhere in the middle if we were actually to publicly bid this alternative. Here's another profile showing that drilled shaft alternative. Next, we also looked at what if we went in front of the home? So this would leave the structure on the wet side of the flood protection, but provide the protection the city of Fargo is looking for, for our infrastructure, including, as Commissioner Pepcorn pointed out, our water treatment plant. The cost estimate that we developed for this was about three-quarters of a million dollars. The reason for the lower cost here than the flood wall alternative behind the home is due to the height of the wall being much shorter, since we're up on top of the riverbank at this point, as well as the construction of this project is a lot more simplified than versus being behind the home. Here's a rendering that we had developed of what this flood wall alternative could conceptually look like. You can see it would require removable flood wall panels at the driveway opening. We would require, as part of this, specified trigger points of when the flood wall panels would have to be installed based off of varying river levels. We'd also be looking at installing valves on their sanitary sewer and water services that if the river reaches a certain level, again, we would have to close those to make sure that we are protecting our infrastructure and that floodwaters can't penetrate our underground utilities. One more option that we looked at was relocating the structure to a remnant lot within the Belmont neighborhood. So to the east of this property, or of fourteen fifty-eight, there is a previous flood buyout that the city completed that had a larger Rambler located on the lot. The levy is now constructed on a portion of that lot. However, there is a remnant portion of it that could have this structure be located on it. We worked with the property owner, as well as a couple of different moving companies, to confirm the feasibility of relocating the structure. At that time in two thousand nineteen, we developed a cost estimate of about one-point-three million, which included all the site prep for the new lot, including new basement and et cetera for setting the structure on, as well as removing the basement the structure sits on now, as well as levy construction at that lot. Next, here is a timeline. Not going to step through every single one of these. Just really want to demonstrate that we've been doing a lot of activity on this property. So this project, or the Belmont Flood Risk Management Project, started all the way back in the fall of two thousand fifteen, proceeded with the commission actions in sixteen and seventeen. Since then, we've been working with the property owners on developing these alternatives, and now we're in front of you here tonight on October third. Last slide here is a matrix we put together of the five different alternatives. So I only presented four alternatives to you. The fifth alternative is option C, which is full property acquisition and structure reconstruction. So this was an option the property owner brought forward to us at one point as something that we could look into since they do have the original architectural drawings of the property. So theoretically, the structure could be built somewhere else at the same, you know, standards that it exists today. So stepping through each column, real quickly, structures preserved, pre-self-explanatory, yes or no, depending on what option selected? Structure maintains historic designation, yes or no? Again, I'd point out, if the structure is relocated to that other lot, it would no longer be deemed historic home on the national registry because it has to be located on its original lot. So the structure would be protected and still in existence, but no longer on the national historic registry. Structures floodproof, or flood protected, excuse me. The only option there is where we're proposing to put the flood wall on the street side of the structure. Design complexity, a levy, earthen levy is pretty easy to design versus flood wall either behind or in front of the home. Similar to construction, earthen levy is pretty easy to construct compared to a flood wall, especially on the riverside. And then future operation and maintenance. Earth and levy really only has a couple of costs to it of mowing it and some weed control. Floodwalls, we know whether it's fifty, hundred years down the road, there's going to have to be some sort of structural rehabilitation or replacement of that wall, as well as during periods of flooding, our public works crews will have to be installing those removable panels. So there is more operation maintenance costs with either flood wall alternative. And then estimated costs, we put those in twenty-two-three dollars, accounted for inflation numbers over the past few years to try and better illustrate what the potential cost could be if we constructed this project next summer.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question there, Nathan. So the one-point-one million compared to the seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, is that because it's in twenty-two-three dollars?
Correct. Yeah. So we tried to count for eight percent increases of construction dollars in twenty-twenty and twenty-one, and then this past year, we're seeing closer to twenty percent. So let's try and demonstrate twenty-two-three dollars. And with that, open it up for any discussion.
John, do you want to make a call?
Hello, I'm John Stern. I've lived in this house for thirty-five years or so. The house is on the national historic registry. It's an exceptional house, and the community recognizes that. First of all, I want to just thank the engineering department for all the work that they've done on this, and the, they're trying as hard to save the house as I am, and it shows, and I really appreciate all the work. There's that old saying, you can't fight City Hall. No, you really can't, but you can sure work with City Hall to try and find solutions, and that's what has happened in this case. I think that the, the solution of a wall in front of the house is actually a win for everybody. The neighborhood wins because it gets the protection that it, that it needs, including the water treatment plant. The community wins because it gets to keep this significant architectural masterpiece. The taxpayer wins because really it's the cheapest of all the options. The taxpayer wins again because it stays on the tax rolls. And third, although that, this is not, has never been my primary mission, we, as a family, win because we get to live in this house that we love so much. Financially, we'd be better off taking the money and running, but I don't think the community, the city, or the taxpayer would be better off.
Thank you, John. Tonight, we're not making a decision. You have a question?
John, before you leave, for those who don't know, tell us what's historic about the house.
The house was designed by Frank Lloyd Wright's granddaughter. Frank Lloyd Wright was asked to design the house, but he turned it down because he was too busy and he was at the end of his life, and he recommended his granddaughter, who designed three houses in Fargo-Moorhead with her husband. The two in Moorhead, which were fantastic houses, were lost to flooding.
Thank you. Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, this is a great picture. So, and Nathan, maybe you can say, it's, so we have four houses left to buy out of all the houses left on all of our buyout lots. Is that correct?
Depending on what is determined on this home, yeah, it's either three or four.
Three or four houses. So, so think of that, of all the buyouts. And so the interesting thing is, so the stern houses to the left, the other two houses there are two of the houses that we are going to buy out. And then the other thing, the lot to the right of the cul-de-sac there, that's the potential relocation spot for that house if we moved it. So that's, that's kind of a good picture because it kind of summarizes a lot of the things. Thank you.
And then Nathan, the action of the commission is going to be what? What's recommendation tonight?
We are just presenting it for your guys' awareness tonight. In a couple of weeks, we can come back and see if you guys are ready to make a motion.
Nancy, is that a receive and file, or is any motion at all?
Receive and file would be appropriate.
Do I have a motion?
So, excuse me. Let me just.
We can have a discussion.
Are we not ready to, to make a decision?
No. So the, what the engineering want to do is present to you the alternatives, have a discussion. John Stern normally could bring about twenty neighbors in to testify. What we wanted you to do is see it, and you're welcome to meet with John and Cherry's wife anytime, talk about it, what they'd like to do, or meet with the engineering. But the engineering team felt, let's have it presented first and not force you to make an action tonight. Do I have a motion for receive and file?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. You know, to the stern family and to others who embrace and celebrate history, thank you. You know, we don't have enough examples in our community of us supporting decisions like historic registry properties. And as a government subdivision, that's critically important to send that message out, that we embrace history, that we celebrate it and will honor it when we can, versus just demolishing history because it's easy. So thank you for, for going the extra mile, for going those extra steps to get this house designated. I'm not sure, what are there, three or four, maybe five or six historic registry properties in the city that are left? So it's good that we preserve and protect this.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item forty, request to acquire seven-fourteenth Twelfth Street North. Jim Gilmore to explain.
Thank you. Remember this from a little bit earlier in the meeting when you declared it a dangerous building. The, I don't know if I have a map here, but when we approved that ROAR's renewal agreement, part of that was to use a portion of the money to acquire and demolish, you know, properties within the Roseville neighborhood. I think I may have a map here, if I can find it, but there's an area that's eligible. The only eligible activities within the renewal plan, and it's real clear within our renewal law, is really the acquisition, demolition of properties. The other thing that's eligible is public facilities. We don't really need anything like that in this particular neighborhood. So I thought when we prepared that plan three years ago was that there would be opportunities where a rundown house comes up, where the city could acquire it, clear it, maybe use it as a land trust house, maybe Habitat for Humanity, maybe just sell it on the market as another single-family home so that that site would be redeveloped. And so this was the area that was included in the renewal plan. It's the Roseville neighborhood, kind of west, or to me, east of Barrett Street, well, to Broadway from Seventh Avenue up to Fourteenth Avenue. If we go back to the, or photo of the, the site, the seven-oh-one Brew Company acquired this property with the thought of expanding their parking further to the north. They don't own the, the next house, but they thought it might, you know, might be available someday. And so their thought was to demolish this and turn it into a parking lot to meet some of the parking needs of seven-oh-one Brew. However, the zoning does not allow a standalone parking lot, and really the planning department doesn't want, you know, any additional expansion of commercial activity into this area. And so they're kind of left with a, a house that's rundown that they acquired for thirty thousand dollars, and, you know, if we don't buy it, I don't know if they'll, they'll keep it and, you know, try to, try again some other time. But it seemed to me that it would be a good opportunity to remove this house and then put in a new single-family home, you know, preferably owner-occupied, that would fit with the neighborhood. You look at kind of names of the owners, and as most of this to the north is owner-occupied, single-family homes. They acquired the property for thirty thousand. They are willing to sell it to the city for twenty-nine thousand, which is about what we have. And the, the TIF fund, the idea here would be to use the existing twenty-nine thousand to acquire the property this year, and then the additional hundred-and-fifty thousand that would become available in March, a portion of that would be used to demolish the, the property. The planning department could then look at either selling it to a private party. I, I think they've had some discussions that Habitat for Humanity has a strong interest in the property, and the land trust would be another option. So the, the recommendation is to acquire the, the property for twenty-nine thousand in TIF funds. We let that dangerous building process go ahead, just in case we aren't able to close as soon as we would like. So be happy to answer any questions. The finance committee did review this and recommend approval.
Any questions? Commissioner Preston?
So it's not a question, but I will make a statement here. I absolutely think it would be wonderful to have a single-family home put into this lot. However, what I don't support at all is using the ROAR's TIF money at this point. And the reason is, the core neighborhood plan, the, the consultant for the core neighborhood plan is coming back. They are working with the Roosevelt neighborhood to do a block-by-block, more detailed plan, and we have no idea where those priorities are going to be at this point. I can imagine it probably is not going to be this block. There's so much commercial surrounding these single-family homes, it very well may not be this particular block. The biggest issue is that the neighborhood should be involved in the decision-making about where those dollars are going to get spent. And one of the things that we've talked about, not only for the Roosevelt neighborhood, but for other neighborhoods as well, is to take a very targeted approach so that we start to improve a block at a time. And if we are scattered about where we're spending the dollars that might be available to us to improve the neighborhood, we're never going to get that concentrated improvement that people will begin to see and understand, and the market will respond to it. So I just, if we can find another source of funding, that's fine. I will protest loudly using the ROAR's TIF dollars.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Commissioner Preston. I have similar questions in, in different like veins. If this lot gets developed and or sold to somebody, somebody else, does that, do those funds then go back to the neighborhood TIF?
Should I follow the question?
So say we sell this lot and get some revenue back out of it?
Jimmy saying, sell it privately.
Can the revenue be put back toward the TIF for further neighborhood projects?
It would probably be up to you. I think it could go either way. It could certainly be put back into the TIF if it was sold to a private party. That'd probably be the most appropriate thing to do.
It, it would be, and I could support that. You know, if, when I, when I recall when this seven-oh-one came in the neighborhood, back at that point in time, Roosevelt, they were throwing their arms up there and quit, quit fighting for anything because they were never winning. You know, so that, that East End parking lot was a house too, if I recall. And that got raised and turned into a parking lot, and, and, and they didn't even bother to engage with us because there was no winning. So I don't know how, how far we go, or how, I don't know at what point we really like put teeth into the neighborhood needs and wants. We've already lost part of the properties there, and so I don't know. I, I think we need to listen to the neighborhood.
I think what Commissioner Shannon is referring to, there were two single-family houses in poor condition that were removed here and with rezoning and demolished, just for your background.
I think if you buy it with TIF funds this time, you could do an RFP, John, to do that way. You could also, in your motion, say if it sells privately, it goes back into the TIF funding. I don't think there'd be any. I don't think there'd be any objection. It's a dangerous building. The only thing inspections would like to get it down this fall. So if we buy with TIF money and, and, uh, tear it down, then we can sell it, and it, you can design the RFP. It's in the Roosevelt neighborhood. It qualifies according to what the TIF money is supposed to be utilized for, and many of the neighbors are complaining it's a dangerous building in the midst. I think Jim is just trying to expedite that at this time. It gives you time all winter to define what you want in that space. But what happened is the Rose, the Brew Hall or seven-oh-one bought this thinking they could make it a parking lot, and our zoning came in and they would not allow it, nor would we allow it. So I think the neighborhood did win on that one cuz we didn't go ahead and say, go ahead and put a parking lot in there. But I do think it's what the TIF money was designed for, and it's an opportunity.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston?
If I could just respond to a couple of things. So it would make sense, um, if this particular property would go into the CLT. Uh, if that's the case, it's not going to be probably sold to them. I'm assuming it would be transferred over to them. So there'd be no revenue coming in for that. The second piece is, we're talking about demolition costs. How much, how much would that cost, Jim?
Probably twenty to thirty thousand is.
So that's another thirty thousand or so, twenty-five thousand, um, that would come out of the TIF, TIF money. We're talking only about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand total. Is that right, in, in that TIF fund ultimately?
I mean, eventually it'll be a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, once we get ten years down the road.
Okay.
But initially, you're right, it's about a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred.
But the whole value of the TIF is how much, Jim, over the course of the TIF? How many million is it worth?
I think it's over four million.
So it's not just two-fifty, it's four million dollars.
However, it will drain for the first couple of years, the funding that might be available for any other project. So, um, it's not just the price of the, of the lot here, is my point. It's also the, the demolition costs. Um, again, I would say, we need to talk to the neighborhood. We need to find out what their priorities are gonna be. And we're right in the middle of that process. Maybe, Nicole, if you can come up and address where CZB is in that process and what the timeframe might be for that more detailed plan.
We're in the process of, uh, coordinating those, uh, dates with the consultant, perhaps in November. We will start to amend the contract to get, uh, CZB, uh, in discussions with the neighborhood more directly.
I could just, um, in the conversations about this Newman project, it was very clear that this was to be a neighbor-generated, neighborhood kind of, um, uh, generated kind of project. So, I just, the neighborhood needs to be involved.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. Jim, help me understand what happens if we don't act on this? Is it in the, the, the channel to be demolished or to be condemned? Help, I, help me get that big, that picture in place.
Yeah, you de- you declared it, uh, a dangerous building about an hour ago, or within the last hour.
And then?
And so it'll get torn down. Now, the, the property owners here, I don't know what they will do the, with the property, once it's demolished, cuz they'll continue to own it.
But will they be required to demolish it, or if they don't, then the city does?
If, if they don't, the city does. And so, I don't know, Chad, do you wanna address, um, what your plans are if, if the city doesn't buy this from you?
Yeah, good evening. Um, right now, we're just still kinda undecided on what to do with the lot, um, as far as what we wanna do. Um, once we realized that, you know, we, like Jim said, we originally bought it because we needed parking. And we felt we were doing kind of a disservice to the neighborhood with all the street parking. So we really wanted to alleviate that and have some type of lot closer to the restaurant. But, um, through the zoning stuff, you know, obviously that's not gonna work. Uh, so we approached Jim to kinda help us kinda figure out what we can do, and that's kinda where we came up with this plan, so.
If, if we own it, we control the destiny of, Jim, if they own it, you could sell it private, you could do whatever you want. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask, is there another place we can get funding for this?
Um, I know your budget's pretty tight, so I don't think so.
Nicole, is there anything?
I don't know if there's any NRI money left. I think that money's been all spent. We used to have this neighborhood revitalization initiative money. When these would come available, we'd have money to address it. We don't have, I don't know if we have anything.
Um, yeah, there's still some, that's a good point. In the NRI, there's still some money there, but also the ARP funds with that million-dollar set aside that you had, as well as, uh, our initial approach was gonna be through HUD, uh, CDBG funds, um, as we normally would to take, uh, dangerous, um, property.
So you're saying there is no additional dollars available, or there are?
Uh, there are. They're just different.
Okay.
Action steps that are a little longer in that process, but.
Can we investigate that?
Yeah, absolutely.
HUD funding is a fact that it'll take six months, though, if we wanna take the building down, can we still pursue HUD money and take the building down?
Yeah, uh, yeah, taking the building down and what Sean has to do is completely separate from the city acquiring it.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. I guess where I'm landing on this is I think it's the owner's responsibility for the moment. They've bought a property, you, it's in your hands. You know, we didn't encourage you to buy it. You know, it's, I guess we'll see what, what happens, but that's kinda where I'm at. I'm not so sure the taxpayer owes fifty thousand dollars to invest in this, to, to resolve it. Though I'd like to see Habitat or CLT home in there, I just don't think it's our job right now when private people own the property and it's, it's on, it's their responsibility.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. Um, Nancy, the city attorney, um, can we, is there a way we could table this and come back with some additional, some of these questions answered? It feels like we do not have enough information here, and I just wanna make sure we're making smart decisions when we're talking about spending this kind of money, and what other options do we have? Um, and then also, how would we, how, what would it look like for us to pay back the TIF at some point and have that as a guarantee?
You, you certainly could, um, decide not to take action today. Um, I'm not sure what, uh, uh, Jim's timing is with respect to the purchase, if that, if there's a deadline or anything like that. But other than that, no, that the, uh, dangerous building proceeding would proceed on, on task.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to, um, table this and have staff investigate other possible funding sources.
I would second. I wouldn't second it. Any further discussion? Commissioner Pepcorn?
I just think we have to be very careful, cuz if we don't buy this lot, then we, if we buy the lot, then we know the destiny. If we don't buy the lot, we don't know the, the destiny. And so we have to be very careful. To me, we've spent twenty minutes making a very simple issue very complicated. This is an opportunity, if you ask the Roosevelt neighborhood, would they like to have a single-family house built on that lot? Of course. So, I, I, this is just, uh, I, I think we have to be very careful. And I would encourage you to, uh, change, change it, and, and let's buy this lot, uh, because we don't know what's gonna happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm talking about tabling it till the next meeting and coming back with the additional information so we can make a good decision.
Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item forty-one, recommendation for second reading and final adoption ordinance relating to the use, care of streets and sidewalks. Nancy Morris to explain.
Actually.
Chris Helmick as well?
I, I presented it under my signature, but, uh, Captain Helmick does have a presentation regarding where we are and where we're going um, with the, uh, sidewalk, uh, use of streets, and also the noise ordinance and the request for a delay on action, um, with respect to the noise ordinance.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, as Nancy said, uh, we're coming back with, uh, one recommendation and then, uh, another recommendation as far as delaying the eleven-oh-two changes. So what I wanna do tonight is just kinda walk through, uh, both ordinances, just to give you a little bit of background and, uh, give you an update of where we're at and what we're asking. Uh, so when you look at Article eighteen-oh-three, which governs the street performers, um, currently, the ordinance outlines that, uh, the performing hours are between the hours of nine AM and ten PM any night of the week. Um, also, a major part of this ordinance is that they need to adhere to the loud unnecessary noise, which is Article eleven-oh-two, which I'll also talk about here in a little bit. Um, one of the other things too that's in the current ordinance is that, uh, the street performers need to have a permit for street performing. And, uh, that's been a point of contention. Um, some other provisions in this ordinance, uh, are things like, uh, they need, they cannot obstruct the sidewalks or doorways of businesses. They can't sell recordings or other products. They can't perform within fifty feet of other, of the, the push carts that are downtown. They can't perform within a hundred-and-fifty feet of other performers. Uh, they can't connect to electrical outlets owned by the city or others. And any violations under this ordinance are considered an infraction and are punishable for up to a thousand-dollar fine. So with that in mind, what we're asking or recommending at this point for changes to Article eighteen-oh-three is to remove the requirement for a permit for street performers. Uh, this would allow any performing, uh, to occur without any permit through the city. And, uh, Nancy's looked into this, and we believe that that is the right recommendation to make. Uh, however, anything else in this ordinance would remain as it is, uh, including the hours of performing. So, street performers would be held to the nine AM to ten PM hours, and, uh, anything outside of that would be considered a violation.
So that's your recommendation at this time?
Uh, correct, with that particular ordinance.
Do I have a motion? For recommended changes in Article eighteen-oh-three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask a question? So, on Tuesday night, I was driving on Broadway, and it was a full rock band. It was a drum set, an amplifier, and a microphone, and so under this, would that, that would not be allowed? Is that correct?
Uh, actually, Commissioner, that would be covered under, uh, Article eleven, which I'll talk about here. Uh, Article eighteen just governs street performers, but it doesn't talk about, uh, that specifically. Section eleven, we'll actually talk about that. Uh, so at this point, the only change that would be tied to Article eighteen that we're recommending is that street performers would not need a permit. And, and when I say a permit, I mean a street performer permit, not, that has nothing to do with noise or, or amplified sound.
Okay, and I apologize.
Go ahead.
Sir, apologize, Mr. Chair, but, but the other one is, there's a gentleman playing right across, uh, right next to Atomic Coffee with an amplifier that he plugs in. So, and it's on a sidewalk.
Correct.
So, so then that would no longer be allowed. Is that correct?
If he is plugged into either a city electrical source or Atomic Coffee's electrical source, and he doesn't have permission, that would be a violation, correct?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Preston?
Could you remind me again, from Article eleven, what the decibel level is?
You're gonna go into that next, aren't you?
Yes, I am, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Roll, Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. I'm just curious, Captain Helmick, have we heard from the participants, the people who do this downtown? Are they on board? Are they embracing this?
Well, that's, uh, that's gonna lead into the discussion about Article eleven, because, uh, that's mostly where our feedback has come from. Uh, we have met with some of the street performers, and obviously they are, have a vested interest in us keeping the street performing downtown. Uh, there might be some disagreement in, in the noise and the amplification of the sound. But, uh, the feedback that we got from the, the community downtown was mixed. Uh, there were a lot of people that wanted street performing to continue, and there were other people that didn't, but mainly that was tied to the noise.
And Mayor, if I might continue, either Captain Helmick or Nancy, help us understand the, 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 uh, the legal protections people have under the First Amendment to, to congregate and to, to assemble and to speak. And how does that play into this?
That does play into this, and in fact, what we're looking at is the removal of the permit, um, and so that we are in compliance with constitutional requirements that they do have, uh, First Amendment rights. So, any restrictions are time, place, and manner restrictions that are reasonable and approved by the City Commission. So that is the, what is being recommended now is the changes to the sidewalk performer, um, ordinance as it exists, uh, to, uh, ensure compliance with, uh, constitutional rights of First Amendment. Um, what you do have before you actually is, um, presented for a second reading. You have seen it a couple of times and then delayed last, last meeting. So the motion would actually be to approve, um, the, uh, second reading of, of the, uh, street performer ordinance, which is the removal of the permit, um, and, uh, the reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions.
And if I might, the, maybe the dumbest question of the night, is this just downtown, or is this across the whole city?
This is citywide.
Citywide, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Now we get into Article eleven, is that right?
Correct. Uh, so looking at Article eleven-oh-two, which is the loud unnecessary noise ordinance, uh, in the current ordinance, it says that it's unlawful to make any sound, unnecessary, or unusual noise, or any noise which, and either annoys, disturbs, injures, endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others. So, along with that, eleven-oh-two, oh-three outlines some of the standards for determining a noise violation. Uh, some of those standards includes the, include the volume of the noise, the intensity of the noise, whether or not the noise is usual or unusual, uh, whether it's natural or unnatural, uh, the volume and intensity of the background noise. In addition to that, in the downtown area, uh, there are further restrictions on the time of day. Uh, so currently, between ten PM and six AM, from Sunday through Thursday, uh, anything outside of that, uh, there are certain decibel levels that need to be adhered to. And then on Friday and Saturday, uh, the, the hours change to eleven PM and seven AM. So during those, uh, outside those, those timeframes, the additional requirements are that, uh, according to the current, the current ordinance is that there are camping radios or sound amplifiers. However, it's, uh, the, our findings over the last several weeks when we've been looking at this, that's not forcible. Uh, essentially, whether or not it's amplified sound is secondary. Uh, what we really need to be looking at is the level of the sound itself. Uh, so if someone could play an amplifier and stay within the, the decibel level that's outlined in the ordinance, then they would not be in violation of the ordinance. Um, currently, the ordinance says that, uh, during those timeframes, between the ten PM and six AM or the eleven PM and seven AM timeframes, the decibel level is fifty-five. Outside of that, the decibel level, which falls to fifty. Well, this is where our, the complication of this ordinance came in. If you recall, the last time that I was here, uh, we proposed raising that to seventy decibels. Uh, well, that was met with, uh, some opposition, and, uh, not just from the commission, but also from the community. Uh, they felt that maybe that was too loud. Uh, and that really got us to look at this ordinance and come to the conclusion that we really don't have the expertise to decide what should that sound level be. Um, so Nancy and I discussed that, uh, we would like to come back to the commission and recommend further study, uh, using, uh, an expert to look at what is normal for the downtown area. Um, cuz right now, just to give you a, uh, on, uh, a non-expert, uh, uh, opinion on this, fifty-five decibels is essentially the volume of a conversation. Uh, and that makes the, the enforcement of this unreasonable, because frankly, anyone who's downtown having any type of conversation, uh, after ten PM or eleven PM would likely be in violation. Although, I don't think that that is gonna work. Uh, so what we decided was that we'd recommend that, uh, we get that expert input and help us decide what is a reasonable sound level for a downtown urban environment like ours. And also, you know, what is the normal level of sound? So if we know what the normal level of sound is, then we can also determine what is above and beyond that. And, uh, uh, again, we don't have the, the technical expertise to, to make that decision, and we have had a lot of opinions. Uh, we have folks that live downtown that would think that fifty, fifty-five is reasonable. Uh, we have the street performers. Some of them believe that we should be at eighty decibels. Uh, we have bar owners who feel that it should be unlimited. Um, so, not sure what the right answer is there.
But you had a graph that showed the city traffic is eighty-five. The busy downtown area is eighty-five.
Correct.
Well, the Fargo Dome at a hundred-and-five is, is hurts yours and causes problem. One of the problems we have, your ambient noise is high enough that how do you pop it to, if it's eighty-five to start, then what's too loud?
Correct. Uh, just as an example. Just as an example, again, not using a, a, a regulated sound meter, but using an app on my phone, standing outside our police station on 25th Street, the normal sound there is anywhere from 70 to 75 decibels. And that's during normal business hours. And so, downtown's gonna be very similar, on top of all the other activity that's going on down there. So, again, it really comes down to what is normal for that area, and what does the downtown community want? And we felt like we didn't have enough informed information to, to, to make that determination to come back and, and propose a change to the ordinance until we did further study. Which leads me to the, the questions that we felt that need to be considered further. Again, what is reasonable level of noise for downtown? I think if you talk to different people, you'll get different answers. And we need an expert-backed study to review that and tell us what is normal, and then help us compare that to other urban environments or cities this, a similar size. Second, really important thing is what does the downtown community want? Again, there's gonna be a wide mixture of opinions, but the downtown community doesn't just include the residents that live down there, but it's also the visitors and the businesses and the bars that are down there. And what do they feel is reasonable? And then, again, how do the liquor establishments, the, the push carts, and the other businesses fit into this? Because again, we have issues too with some of the push cart operators that are playing music and feel that that helps generate more business. So, we, we need to get more input from those stakeholders to make a decision as far as what should we, where should we be at for noise downtown? And then also, you know, looking long-term, how do we mitigate noise concerns for future growth and development downtown? And not just downtown, but other parts of the city. Because as, as more development happens downtown and more businesses are put in, or more residents are put in, how do we keep this from continuing to become a problem? It's not a situation that we're easily gonna ticket, ticket our way out of it. I could write a ticket today for a street performer who might be playing too loudly, that same street performer might be back tomorrow doing the same thing. But then we have other issues too, that, okay, well, maybe we have a, a piece of equipment on an apartment building that's causing noise. What are we gonna do about that? We also have the traffic issues. So, there's a, long story short, what we decided, or what we found initially starting this project that we felt was gonna be an easy, quick fix, we found that it's not. And there's a lot of complexities to it. And what we really wanted to do is make sure that before we came forward with another proposal, that we, we did some studying, we did some further research, and that we include other city staff with this, because again, it's not just a police issue, there's, there's engineering, there's planning, there's public health issues. So that, we need to get all of that input along with the stakeholders downtown, and make sure that we develop a, a good recommendation for this ordinance that's gonna work for our city. So, with this, the recommendations for 1102 is to refer the issue to staff on the downtown task force for further input and study. And that we would recommend including reviewing the feasibility of an environmental study of downtown noise, gathering additional input from downtown stakeholders, reviewing the permitting process and the requirements regarding amplified sound. In the meantime, what we will do as the Police Department is we'll continue to enforce the existing ordinance as it is, and do the best that we can. The only exception to that is we would not enforce the amplified sound portion of it.
Questions by commission?
I have a comment, I'm sorry.
May I ask a call back?
I appreciate this approach very much. I know, you know, when you, when you look at how much Fargo has grown and how vibrant the downtown is, this is one of the results that happens when a city like that grows organically and is very dynamic. And so, I support this very much and appreciate the approach, so thank you.
Commissioner Preston?
So, can you go back to that last slide there? Enforcing the existing ordinance, the decibel levels are really low.
Yes, they are.
Are you going to pursue that, or?
What we're going to do is rely more on the other criteria that are outlined, outlined in the ordinance. And we've talked it over with the City Prosecutor, and we feel that we're on good ground with that. So, it'll be less about the decibel level and more as describing and documenting what is unusual about the noise that, and, and if we have a complainant, that's gonna be even more helpful. We don't always have a person who's willing to come to court and testify about why this noise was disturbing to them. So, there's a, there's, there's things in that ordinance that we feel that we can enforce, and we can use to try to, to, to take that enforcement action. We certainly will try to measure the decibel level, but that may not, excuse me, that may not be the, the, the end-all for, for the enforcement.
So, Commissioner Preston's downtown next Saturday, and she's the band Commissioner Pepcorn talked about. She can give a complaint, and you guys will enforce it?
Yes.
If I can ask one more question here. So, the concern I have about using ambient noise as the foundation, the floor, I think all of us recognize the number of vehicles that have, had, have been altered, and the noise is horrible from those. So, and those are almost impossible to catch, I would imagine.
It can be difficult, yes.
Yeah, they're terrible. So, I would just caution, and I certainly appreciate this approach. I think it's a really good way to go about it. But caution whatever consultant you bring in, that they're not using, and however, they would measure that foundation or that floor level. Ugh, those cars and motorcycles are terrible.
And I don't disagree with that, Commissioner, and, and that's another reason that we need that expert input. Because Nancy and I went to school for different things, and we just don't know the first thing about, you know, adequately measuring sound, especially when it comes to an environmental health issue like this, and trying to determine what should be a normal level. And, no, I don't disagree with you at all, though, those are, those could be concerns going forward too.
You've been cruising Broadway since Strand was in high school. Come on, John, tell the truth here. Can I have a motion, please?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpac?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Cindy, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. This is gonna be a long night anyway, so just take five minutes and get back at 6:43. It looks like everybody's back, maybe we can start at this time. We have the downtown updates from the Downtown Community Partnership. Cindy Graffio, Graffio was close? Thank you for being so patient.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight, share with you a little bit about what the DCP is doing, the efforts that we have. Downtown safety has obviously been a topic top of mind, not only for our community, our elected officials, but for the DCP, our residents, and the business owners that we represent as well. We have obviously heard the concerns and the challenges that are facing downtown Fargo in a growing urban environment. And so, we have been cognizant of the challenges and issues that have been raised this year. Earlier this summer, when those concerns started being expressed in the downtown area, the DCP was asked to consider restarting what we call the Quality of Life Committee. The D, this committee has existed in several iterations over the course of the years. It used to be called the Downtown Safety Committee. It was renamed the Quality of Life Committee, out of respect for trying to maintain the dignity and the quality of life of our on-house citizens, as well as the residents and business owners of the downtown area. And so, the DCP started the Quality of Life Committee again, back in June. We've been meeting for about four months now. So, this group is a very diverse group of stakeholders, everyone from the businesses, the property owners, but also city staff, the PD, elected officials, the Downtown Engagement Center, public health, homeless health, Fargo Housing, members of our faith community as well. So, this really is a broad group of stakeholders that are invested in maintaining the quality of life downtown from several perspectives. And so, we've had some really great conversations, and really, the focus of this committee is to come up with concrete, effective, rubber-hits-the-road kind of solutions in our downtown area, addressing not only safety, but nuisance issues as well, that we've seen some challenges downtown. One of the other things that the DCP does is, in partnership with the Fargo PD, is we host what's called a downtown download. This is a informational session that is open, free to the public and business owners. It's broadcast on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Fargo PD YouTube channel. And it's a informational session that goes over any cases that are open in the downtown area, it shares statistics. And really, the aim of that is, when we talk about downtown safety, perception versus reality, that's really an opportunity for people who have concerns, businesses, residents, to come and have a direct conversation with the PD and the DCP as well. So, when you attend those meetings, because we attend all of them, what you kind of find is that statistically, downtown Fargo is safe. We have nuisance complaints, but when it comes to major crimes, downtown Fargo is a compact, small, easily identified area. So, really, what we're trying to do is get the reality and real statistics out in front of people. The majority of the major crimes that we have are within isolated populations or at barcloths. If you're coming downtown to Fargo, you know, Tuesday afternoon to bring grandma for ice cream, by and large, you will be safe, you will get there just fine, and you'll be home before you know it. So, so we welcome, anyone can attend that meeting to, again, have a conversation with the DCP and the Fargo PD. We host that right here in these chambers. The next one will be on November 16th. We hold them quarterly, and then monthly during the summer months. Another space that the DCP is convening stakeholder groups is our Business Improvement District Advisory Committee. So, the DCP administers the bid on behalf of the city and the property owners downtown. We have an advisory committee that's made up of property owners and businesses from every district of the downtown area. They get together once a month, talk about issues, concerns, work that block by block and the bid do. The Business Advisory Committee is currently working with city staff to adjust the zones for 2023, extending Zone 1, which is not important, but we extend Zone 1, which will allow additional funding and additional staffing for next year. Bidstaff, we have both safety and hospitality ambassadors, and with the realignment of zones, we'll be able to increase staffing on both sides of those for the 2023 year. Another space that the DCP convenes is, we monthly meet with the Downtown Neighborhood Association, DCP and Bidstaff, Folkways, and the Fargo PD. These are stakeholder organizations in the downtown area that are directly impacted by safety nuisance concerns, and we really are working together to present a united fund, to make sure that communications, and we are promoting downtown as a wonderful place to live and to visit with the events that we hold. And lastly, is the request that we've had to restart the Downtown Task Force Committee. I'm happy to announce that the first exploratory meeting of getting a Downtown Task Force back up and running, we held last week. Commissioner Strand was instrumental in getting that put together. The Downtown Task Force used to historically be a meeting between the DCP and the bid and department heads of the city, so that we can, at a staff level, work to address the technical, practical challenges that we have in the downtown area. This is a meeting that hasn't happened since before COVID, and so, we're really excited at the opportunity to work more closely at the staff level with the city to address those challenges and issues. So, really, the DCP is working several prongs of this multi-pronged approach to make sure that downtown is safe and vibrant and healthy. When it comes to things like the noise ordinance, we very much appreciate the city and the Fargo PD's approach. We want it to be fun and vibrant, we want it to be a great pace to live, we want an 18-hour entertainment district, but we also need it to be clean and safe and a great place to live. And we admire and thank you for your efforts in striking that balance. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Pepcorn?
Mr. Church, well, Cindy, thank you for all your hard work, and I used to be on the liaison before Commissioner Strand, so thank you very much. And can I ask you for a favor?
Sure.
What I'd like you to put on your agenda is, the benches that are on Broadway, I would like to have the, the business owners that I've talked to said their customers do not use those benches. And so, I, I think, just to have input, but from all your different groups about what we could do with that, and I, you're obviously the perfect group to talk about that, but I would like to start a conversation on what to do with those, because if you drive on in Broadway, if you look who sits on those benches, it isn't customers, and there's a lot of loitering, and a lot of vagrants, and a lot of intoxicated people. And so, I think we should consider moving them, and I guess what I'd like to do is, to me, the people that should have the loudest voice are the people where their business is, the benches right in front. So, if you could work on that, I would...
I would happily put that as a first agenda item on the Downtown Task Force when it reconvenes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Cindy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Forty-three downtown safety update, Commissioner Pepcorn?
Sure, and I guess my question, I'm gonna steal one from... Sure. And I guess my question, I'm going to steal one from Commissioner Strand. Have there been deaths in downtown Fargo since our last city commission meeting? That's my first question.
Good evening, Commissioner. And I'll get to your question in just one second. We did have Lieutenant Alfelt prepare kind of an overview of what's been happening downtown, some of our enhanced police presence and operations, future planning in that regard. And then I've got some information on crime, if that's okay Commissioner. I could certainly address that question after his presentation. Is that fine, or would you like that now?
No, that's good. You're good.
All right, if I can, I'm going to move over here. Mayor Commissioners, nice being here with you all tonight. What I wanted to talk about was brought up a little bit earlier. I guess started with and in the Downtown Download, where we were listening to a lot of people's concerns in the downtown area about things that they were seeing, whether that be crime or homelessness, whatever. Cause us to take a little bit of a deeper dive into downtown numbers. And towards the end of the summer, we started doing directed patrols based on those numbers that we were seeing, intelligence and, and crime numbers that we might have been seeing. And did our first directed patrol saturation on August 20th. Received a lot of good feedback on that saturation. Also got a pretty good idea of the pulse of downtown at night, especially a couple of hours prior to bar close and through bar close. Seeing that that was successful, we planned another one for this weekend. And we planned that one early on, actually right around the same time I planned the one August 20th. So we planned this one for October 1st, using a similar model, which was we were focusing on traffic and traffic interdiction, along with foot patrols in the downtown area, to engage with the community and also identify violations that might have been occurring. And so what I'm doing here tonight is just showing you the numbers that we found this past weekend during our last downtown directed patrol saturation. Firstly, involved agencies with this, as you know, we're all looking for more employees, whether that's in private business or in the public sector. And so we did this in collaboration with North Dakota Highway Patrol, our Cass County Sheriff's Office. So North Dakota Highway Patrol provided nine troopers with two K-9s and provided a lot of our traffic enforcement in and around our downtown business district. And that was the, the parameters that I gave. I wanted to have a large presence in the downtown area focusing on the defined business district. Cass County Sheriff's Office provided two deputies. We were able to provide seven of our employees with two K-9s. Also, our City of Fargo Office of Communication and Governmental Affairs provided two videographers, because we wanted to really capture not only what we were doing, but what downtown looks like at, in and around bar closed time. And so that's who was involved in this. Also, on the August 20th saturation, we included North Dakota Highway Patrol and Cass County. So similar type saturation. So the statistics, the arrests, the citations that we saw. Our, our directed patrol was from 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM. We actually stopped at 2:45 AM so that we could debrief, learn from it. We're going to have more of these throughout this year and into next year. And so that's, that was the timeframe. I'm going from our more serious offenses that were identified that night to our lesser offenses as I go through this. So within that five hour time period, we had two arrests for possession of fentanyl, 11 M-30 pills were confiscated, one arrest for possession of fentanyl paraphernalia. We had eight DUI arrests within that five hour period. Five citations issued for possession of marijuana. Five citations issued for possession of marijuana paraphernalia. One citation issued for minor consuming. One citation for possession of false ID. Two urinating in public. Five open container citations. Three driving under suspension. Fifty-seven traffic stops were conducted in that timeframe. We had multiple community contacts, received a lot of good feedback from many individuals in the downtown area. Twenty-three traffic citations for other traffic violations were issued. And 63 warnings for traffic violations were issued. And so that's just a snippet of what we did that night. Our, our comms team put together a brief video of what that looked like that night and then open for any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Pepcorn?
That's, that's great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. But once again, my question was, have there been any deaths in the last, since our last city commission meeting?
You got it? No, and actually there have been, there's only been one death in the downtown area this entire year. That was two homeless individuals, the victim and the suspect, and that person's in custody.
And there was a death, this, since our last commission meeting on the railroad tracks, correct? There was a gentleman killed by a train?
Oh, right. And that's not a criminal offense, but yes, you're correct.
It's a death. That's what I asked, is it a death? Okay. And then there was also a shooting on Main Avenue, correct?
That's not a death.
No.
No, correct, yes. In an apartment on Main Avenue.
Okay. So anyway, so the downtown resource officers, how many do we have right now?
The staffing issues, I would talk to you about one-on-one. We are in the process of expanding our downtown presence. And that's going to be part of next year's rollout and part of the partnerships that we have going on right now with Cass and North Dakota. If you'd like me to provide some of this crime information that might help answer some of your additional questions.
Okay, I'll, I'll just skip the questions then. But my main comment, what's happened was, so we moved our, our headquarters of our police from downtown Fargo to our new, that was a great thing. But that had a significant impact on our presence in the downtown. We're going to have this new substation. That's, can you tell me when that's going to be, is that allowed?
Yes, sir. We believe that's currently slated for the end of October. We're hoping that last weekend in October. And that will enhance our presence. We'll also have a lighted area and a phone for people to call dispatch and things of that nature.
So Mr. Chair, that, that, I do think it was kind of like a double negative, losing our police headquarters from the downtown and then having the, the Engagement Center in its place. That was a severe negative. This, this is just my opinion. And so obviously, I, what you did, what you showed us there, that's a great start. But what we're looking, what I'd also like to see is police presence all the time. When you drive downtown, and I know it's, staffing is an issue, but that's what I would like to see. That was great. Obviously, I had no idea that the crowds were like that on the, on the night. So thank you very much for doing it. But you get, my concept is, I would like our law-abiding citizens to see our officers all the time in the downtown.
Yep. We're in 100% agreement on that. And I think leveraging the partnerships in the short term has given us some tools that we haven't had before. Lieutenant Alfelt and Captain Helmick have worked on a revamping of our community engagement and downtown resource officers to ensure that we have regular presence during bar closings throughout the year, as well as the daytime hours.
So a couple of things, Chief, Bill, you, you talked earlier that you do have guys patrolling certain times, is that correct? In the downtown area? I'd asked one time, and Commissioner Pepcorn is kind of wanting the presence. Do we have walking patrols downtown at set times or usually during the day?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
This is just some downtown data, January through September 28th. And so just to identify the area we're talking about, First Avenue South to Seventh Avenue North and East Street North to the river. We're looking at robberies this year. And so you'll see a summer spike in robberies in that area. And there's just some comparables. So there is an increase in the robberies in that particular area. Even just putting 2019 in there for perspective. The issue, or the, I think the important parts of this are, there's 19 total. Twelve of those have been cleared by arrest. And if you look at the times, a vast majority of those occur, 11 of them occur from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, which is your late evening, early morning hours, coast to bar close. And if you look at the locations of where they're happening, they are clustered around some of our licensed premises and then occurring during those timeframes. The one outlier on the right there, right by the word Fargo, is the incident where the gentleman went into the bank with a bag and demanded money. And he got money from the bank and was arrested later that evening. He was from out of town, I believe Nebraska. So from a crime analysis perspective, we look at when these things are occurring and where they're occurring. We have almost half of the crimes in which the actors are known to each other. The other remaining, happening at night, related to leaving a bar. Sometimes the victims have had too much to drink, either taken advantage of, or they get into a fight that leads into property being taken, which is technically a robbery. So again, just when we talk about, you see the video, some of the issues that our officers have to deal with, from people peacefully enjoying themselves downtown to some of the chaotic things. The over-serving issues, some of the mental health issues. They have a myriad of issues that they have to deal with from one minute to the next. And I think they do an outstanding job with that. As Captain Helmick talked about with the noise issues, all of these things are kind of culminating at the same time. We need some very comprehensive, I think, partnerships to, to get this addressed. We're making some good progress there. The over-serving issue is something that we've talked about with license control, the liquor control board. And we're working as a team there as well to delve into those issues and see what we can do. So again, if you look at those, that just kind of breaks it into different categories. But a large part of those are cleared by arrest. Looking at the other category of aggravated assault, which again, you see a summer spike. And again, more, a larger number in 2022 overall. But again, looking at the times, 64% of those aggravated assaults, 34 out of 53 occur from 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM. And you look at the locations, again, the clustering there of those aggravated assaults, from 8:00 PM to, actually 8:00 PM to 3:00 AM, if you back it up, even 39 of them occur during that timeframe. Sixteen of those, 30% have been adjudicated, arrested, or referred for prosecution. And again, a similar pattern, we haven't had a chance to delve into those in as much detail as the robberies, but similar patterns. In those aggravated assaults would be counted your shootings. So there's been three shootings in the downtown area this year. Shootings and murders across the whole city are down from last year significantly. The three shootings that happened in the downtown area have all been cleared by arrest. Friday night's incident occurred in an apartment on Main. I wouldn't attribute it to a street crime type of issue, but they were obviously known persons. And the other two that happened in the downtown area also occurred between people that knew each other and got into a dispute after bar close and there was a shooting occurred. That's all I have, I think, at this juncture, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. President?
So the photo with the mass of people out on the sidewalks, I'm assuming that was shortly after closing?
It was on bar close, yeah.
It's, I'm assuming that some of these criminal kind of activities that we're seeing, or the assaults especially, related to perhaps over-serving, but just having huge crowds together.
Right. Well, and one of the things we did earlier, Lieutenant Alfelt spearheaded this as well, is that creating those downtown pickup areas for our ride shares to get. What we're trying to do is come up with unique ways to disperse those crowds to prevent that clustering, because sometimes people just bump into each other and there's a dispute and a fight. And then it just, it comes unglued from there. Even, you know, in some instances, the location of food vendors, you certainly support food vendors being out there. But it's sometimes where they set up creates that additional crowd in the street, even in the roadway where cars can't get through. And so we've seen a variety of those types of activities. And the idea tonight was just to give you a little picture of what that looks like. But our cops are dealing with that most weekends at bar close.
So if I could just make one more comment. We watched, I would call it a pretty severe fight happening last night behind one of the bars. And the gentleman was on the ground. He was getting beat up. And unfortunate, and I say this with some trepidation, unfortunately, they dispersed before the cops could get there. Is there some background research? I have a sense that they were told to leave the bar and take it outside. The cops didn't go in to talk to anybody inside. You know, in those cases.
That does, well, if we can, we do. Now, as you, looking at the video, you see how much activity is going on. Sometimes our officers simply don't have time to go in and try and find information that the party who is either injured or involved decided they were leaving. So without a bona fide victim, there, you know, there's not much that we could do or would be able to do from an enforcement perspective. We certainly could follow up with the tavern, the licensed premise owner, but we pretty much have to address what's in front of us and, and do what we can. And a lot of those instances, even when they don't disperse, mutual parties, they don't want, someone doesn't want to make a criminal complaint against the other person. They just want to basically leave. So the other thing I, I think is significant in the data that Lieutenant Alfelt put out there, eight DUIs. Eight DUIs in that small area in a five hour period is also indicative that people have too much alcohol in their systems and they're driving. Those are just eight that we caught with the help of North Dakota Highway Patrol. So you can bet there's a lot more driving around. Again, I think, as a comment was made some previously, you know, we're fortunate that we don't have cars hitting people in, in all that congested downtown area. So we're working very hard on coming up with a plan to encance presence, keep people safe, address some of these other issues that may relate to the, to the businesses themselves, to help them maybe reduce some of that and kind of find a sweet spot in the middle.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. You know, since this topic has surfaced in the last few weeks, I'll, I'll assure everyone that we're, we're putting a lot of focus on this at the Downtown Community Partnership level. With their committees, with their leadership, with their, their outreach to the community. That's front and center. And, and this conversation is, always needs to be front and center. And I welcome folks, being as this is my new portfolio, I welcome people with any suggestions to share with me, topics to run up the flagpole, to, to pass on to others. So that's the DCP. I, I know there's another element of this, I'm not, I, I'm guessing, we're all hearing this. There's a common theme in our activities, and that's alcohol. And, and I'm not anti-alcohol, but I'm pro-managing alcohol and pro, pro having healthy drinking behaviors as much as we can in our, our community. So Commissioner Pepcorn, I know you're, you're Chair of Liquor Control Board. So Commissioner Pepcorn, I know you're Chair of Liquor Control Board, some topics that I would like to see discussed at the Liquor Control Board, just for the sake of the community engaging. And it's already been mentioned, the over-serving issue, which, good for you and good for all of us, that that's being addressed, and I look forward to where we go with that. But there's a lot of topics I'd like to just put on your agendas, you know, so the folks can vet them and hear from each other and hear from the establishments and the customers. Bar closing hours, you know, when do we close bars? Do we close them at 2:00? And if we close them at 2:00, do we allow liquor sales right up until a minute before 2:00? And all the implications of that. So I think that topic is a good topic. Off-sale hours, some have suggested that we maybe pull back the closing servicing, serving time in off-sales to an 11:00 or earlier time, so that people aren't walking out of the bars, going and buying shooters and minis and pumping them in their system as they're walking down the street. And that also includes the type of product. Some say that some of those products should be looked at in the hours of the off-sales. There's a discussion about point of last sale, point of last drink, POLD, POLs, you know, we, that topic needs to be vetted. What's that mean? What's that mean for policies? What would that mean for changes if we consider any going forward? And the last topic I'll advance is requiring liquor establishments to have ID scanners. So these are just some suggestions from my perspective for us to have your committee work through. Hopefully, the trickle-down effect to the people will have some benefits.
John, that's interesting, because Commissioner Kolpak, I talked to one of the business owners downtown suggesting 11:00 closing saw at off-sales, and Jim Schwannik has agreed to do that. He'll close his off-sale 11:00 and see how it works out. I think Commissioner Pepcorn can work with him and see how that works. Certainly, that'll be a thing that's already been volunteered. Police Chief and I talked today about putting some blue lights with telephones and cameras on them in which people can report crime or report a problem. If they need to get a hold, there'll be one at the station. And Commissioner Pepcorn, the reason the station was delayed is supply demand, that we couldn't, Becky couldn't get all the stuff we needed. We wanted it open in August, but now it'll be open in October. But we want Cindy to enter team to think about where else could we put a phone with blue and a camera, which signifies to the public, hey, you got a problem, just like on campus, that we would do that. And we'll look for your committee to come up with other suggestions as well. I think it's great to have the Alcohol Board to look at the things we've talked about.
And Mayor, I'll add one more thing to the general topic, not a liquor control board, but let's step up our surveillance downtown. As long as people know everything you do is on camera, you're on camera. If you're in our downtown, you're behaving good, that's fine. If you're not behaving good, you're being, you're being visual, you're being surveilled. Just another sideline topic.
Any other question, Pepcorn?
The other thing, I do think there's multiple solutions. It isn't just one group or one solution. But the other question I think we have to ask ourselves is, when are we going to stop enabling? Right now, we're using a lot of public tax dollars to enable people. And to give an example, the Lord works in mysterious ways. Last Thursday, I own a property in downtown Fargo, and I was doing some perennial maintenance in the fall, and there was two, a very intoxicated Native American sleeping right next to my building, so I called 911, and they came and roasted him out, woke him up, they had slept there overnight, and then, so I followed to see where they went. They went to the Engagement Center. So we're providing, it's enabling. And so that Engagement Center, that was done in an emergency basis during COVID, because the Cass County Jail was full. That Engagement Center has got to go. That's not staying in downtown Fargo, because that's what's drawing people into downtown Fargo. We have lots of partners, maybe they want to have the Engagement Center there, that'd be great, but we cannot keep enabling. We have the Cooper House, we have the Gladys Ray Shelter, we have the Engagement Center. And so the people that want to help, have help, we need to help them. But to continue to just keep these people circulating, and the officers know who most of them are, and so we're using tax money to keep them going. And so we have to solve the solution, or it's just going to continue. That's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Preston?
Mr. Chairman, I have to respond to that. The Engagement Center is truly taking some individuals off the streets during the day, giving them a place to perhaps sleep it off if they have to, or just rest, or socialize, or whatever, shower, wash their clothes. It's, it's a, it is a help, not a hindrance. And, you know, it's not staffed up as far as it should be or could be. Hopefully, it will be better staffed in the future so that it can be open more hours instead of less. It is a part of the solution to trying to help people who have nowhere to go during the day. Provides a bathroom for them, provides a shower for them, provides a place for them to wash their clothes. So it is part of the solution, not part of the problem.
So Mr. Chair, I'd like to respond. So the best thing, you know, the best thing to do is, the people that need help, that want help, we help them. The people that don't, you know what they should do during the day? Get a job. How's that? How's that being productive members? And so what we're going to talk about in the budget now is, this, we're raising property taxes on people with seniors with fixed incomes, and we're raising the mills, and part of the reason we're raising the mills is to pay for this. And so to me, the other thing is, we have lots of other partners, we have other cities. Right now, the taxpayers in Fargo, we're paying the bill. And so I think we have to start asking some hard questions, and this is enabling. They don't want to say that it's enabling, but providing a place for them to have a shower and spend the day, that's enabling. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kolpak?
Excuse me, I, I think we should have a conversation that's based on fact and not opinion. And I, I, sorry, I, we all take an oath to a code of conduct when we are sworn into this position, and as Mayor, you have responsibility to uphold that code of conduct. And when a commissioner speaks with opinion and without fact, and incites a conversation without data, not only is it demoralizing to city employees, it has a chilling effect on the citizens who come before this commission. So I would ask that you address this behavior.
Commissioner Pepcorn, you have vowed that you would try to do better, and I think we have to keep to facts and figures that we have, and it is dangerous to use opinions or ideas that don't necessarily cover that. I think we also have to be respectful of different nationalities and people, and it's sometimes difficult, but we have to be very careful not to call out people. And we try to do that to be respectful to one another. I do understand that you had an event. I would challenge you to look at the Engagement Center, because it also has a medical clinic, and in that medical clinic, we serve anywhere from eight to 10 people a day that would not otherwise get care. Dr. Hogan recently met a vet that was on the streets that used that Engagement Center, trying to find a job, trying to find housing, trying to find food. And we think we service anywhere from 60 to 70 people a day in the Engagement Center, and basically, they're not on the streets, they're in the Engagement Center getting help. And to Commissioner Preston's note, they can shower, they can get their clothes done, they can get reorganized, but they also can get psychiatric care, they can talk to the presentation sisters, there's a variety of things that happen in that Engagement Center. So maybe time to review that and all the services that we evaluate. The Commission made a commitment on the Engagement Center three years ago to use Chair's money to fund a $900, $900,000, and it was also to help people find rent and rent issues and find areas in which they could be cared for or have a place to stay. We are down to the last $150,000, which is basically Care's money, so it's not costing the taxpayers any money to finish our commitment to the Engagement Center. Jan Eliaison can tell you very much what she has done, and she's done excellent work in regards to that area, and will give you an idea that housing is what you need to do, is you need to find people housing. And we do have an example of that, of somebody who went through the system over and over and over again, and I think, Arlette Preston, you have that in one of the memos you've talked to us about, and that person costs us $123,000 in care, our police time, our people time, our detox time, all the different things. Person placed in an apartment has been to detox twice now. So it does work, and we've got people in the places they need. The Chief could tell you that police force does see probably a group of 15 to 20 people, many of them have mental health issues. That is more something we have to work with the state to address. We have to address the mental health issues in our community. And if you have somebody who has a psychiatric episode right now, the question is, where will they end up? And oftentimes, in the back of a police car with nowhere to go. And that's truly the issue we have in the community. Used to be shipped in Jamestown, we don't have that option anymore. So what we truly have to look at as a community is, how do we take care of our mental health people? And I'm sorry, they're part of our community. There's many people that are residents of our community that have crises, and those crises have to be addressed to the best way we can. And that's the responsibility of City Commission, because we take care of all our citizens, take care of all our people. And this is something we can have further discussion on. I encourage you all to go over and look at the Engagement Center. Yes, we have it for COVID overflow, but that's gone. We don't do that anymore. We moved the homeless clinic over to the Engagement Center, and we're taking care of people. And the other thing is, it helps people to have place, when it's 105 degrees out, where do you go? You can't get relief in the parks. So I hope that addresses the issue as you wanted. Commissioner Kolpak? Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I also saw some folks downtown the other day. I'm driving down the street, and I see a wandering of four, five, six people, and I go, hmm, they're going to the Engagement Center. And there are some folks who look at them and go, oh, those people over there, you can see what we're drawing downtown, they don't want them, we don't want them in our backyard. But here's what I saw. I saw hope. I saw people going somewhere where there's help at the entrance they were walking into. I saw people aiming somewhere where there was some support for them, where there were people asking them, how are you doing, and how can we make your life better? That's what I saw. And if we're not going to have that in our community, what the heck are we going to have? These, everybody is somebody's family. Everybody is somebody's daughter, or son, or brother, or sister, or aunt, or uncle, mom, or dad. So I'm glad I saw that hope, and I'm proud of our community for providing assistance to people who are challenged in life, because but for the grace of God, there go I. You know, my view is this, if that Engagement Center, and if you don't know, it's the former police station, if it isn't big enough for the needs of our people, then let's move across the street and take over the civic center, take care of more people. It's important we see who needs help, and it's important we see that we're providing them help, and it's important we do that.
Commissioner Preston?
I just want to make one more comment here in regards to what I perceived as being a total disrespect that was voiced about people with mental health issues and chemical dependency issues. They are our neighbors, they live here in Fargo, whether it be on the street or they're housed, however, they are our neighbors, and the disrespect that was shown here needs to be stopped.
I think, Chief, we're done. Thank you. 44 requests from Downtown Neighborhood Association, provide input feedback on issues in downtown. Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, I believe Austin Fox is going to come up and speak from the DNA perspective in regards to this issue.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Preston. Mayor Mahoney and City Commissioners, thank you for having me. This discussion has been really great tonight, and I just want to bring a neighbor, the neighborhood perspective to this. I represent the Downtown Neighborhood Association, where I serve as the Chair of the Board. The DNA Board has many experiences living downtown, and all have a passion for our unique and wonderful neighborhood. I've lived in downtown for four years, and I absolutely love it. There's no other place in Fargo quite like it. I love walking to almost everything I want or need. I love the vibrancy, I love the nightlife, I love being so close to Island Park, I love the culture, I just love everything about it. I was not here when the focus started to shift to the revitalization of downtown Fargo, but I have lived in Fargo for most of the past decade, and what this city has done downtown is truly remarkable. It is a center for shopping, dining, entertainment, working, and living. I was amazed to see how busy it was downtown this summer. Fargo has honestly only been a ghost town for me when I've lived here, with lake dwellers and college students just kind of fleeing. But this summer was honestly different. There were people walking the streets at all hours of the day, families playing in Broadway Square, grandmothers shopping at the boutiques, business people going out for lunch, and runners getting in their morning exercise. As an urbanist myself, it brought a smile to my face to see how far this neighborhood had come. The recent rhetoric around the downtown neighborhood is that it's being overrun by individuals meant to cause harm, and that it's an unsafe place to live, work, and visit. I'm here to tell you that even though there are issues, just as any urban city center has, this rhetoric is not only harmful, but it's simply untrue. There are initiatives in place, as were highlighted here tonight, or that are soon to be in place, that are addressing these issues, and we should focus on giving these the resources and the energy they need to succeed and not tearing down the best part of the city of Fargo. There are more than 4,000 residents who live in the downtown neighborhood. This is one of the biggest neighborhoods in Fargo. It's where people want to be. What is great about an urban environment is that it attracts people from all backgrounds, creating a place that is not only diverse in its offerings, but diverse in its people as well. We, as downtown residents, have chosen to live in this neighborhood for this. We believe that we, or we embrace those who look and act differently than us. Someone coming from a relatively homogeneous community filled with neighbors who look and act like them will have a lower tolerance towards these people. I grew up in a very small rural community, and I used to think that anyone who didn't look or act like me were an automatic threat. I chose to live in a place that exposed me to different people. I was also taught from a very young age to treat people as I would like to be treated. I have found that treating any individual on the sidewalk, be it a grandmother shopping or a panhandler, with respect will get you respect in return. I believe that there, many of the negative stories that you hear about downtown are from people who perceive threats too easily or are automatically hostile towards the individuals on the streets. The COVID pandemic caused a social upheaval we have not seen in decades. Mental health issues and crime seemingly went up overnight. These are issues that have carried in today, but Fargo is not alone in trying to address them. These are issues that are happening everywhere in this country, in small communities and large. What I am thankful for, however, though, is that our issues aren't as big as larger cities in this country, and we have people that are actively working on initiatives to make our community safer while also being able to welcome people from all walks of life. I was going to highlight some initiatives that are happening currently, but we kind of highlighted them in these past discussions. I would like to point out that the Mobile Outreach Unit has done some amazing work with substance abuse-related incidents and treating individuals in those emergencies with kindness and respect. I also would like to point out, and I think this is still true, but with the police substation being built downtown, I believe there's also public restrooms that are being built with that as well. I love my neighborhood, as does everyone on the DNA Board. I don't want our downtown to become like every other place. We are unique and diverse, and I would like to keep it that way. We, as the Downtown Neighborhood Association, would like to see more resources and energy being diverted into the initiatives that have been brought up tonight. We would also like the Commission to acknowledge that these issues can only be addressed through coordinated efforts by multiple organizations and entities, and that they cannot be fixed by forcing people out. We would like to ask the Commission focus these efforts through working groups such as the Downtown Task Force, and we, as the DNA, would love a seat at the table at that, so that healthy conversation between the organizations doing the work, the city, and the neighborhood can take place, and we can find solutions together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the 2023 City of Fargo Budget. First, I'd like to thank the budget team. If I could have you stand up, Mike Redlinger, Steve Sprague, Terry Gayheart, Susan Thompson, and Jordan Cornelius, if you'd please stand up. Like us to give them a round of applause. Bruce Scrub helped in some ways as well, but the team worked hard. Ken Costin was gone, it was a difficult budget that we went through, and we've done our best effort, and I want to just go over a couple of different things that have come out after we've had the discussions over the last month. So our core values or initiatives, 2023 has prioritized the retention of Team Fargo. Our employees are important for us, ensure a street-level Ensure a street-level excellence. Emphasize smart growth. Bolster the operational resiliencies. The Fargo Dome expansion is on discussion now, in advance of a Performing Arts Center. When we look at the compensation or general budget, it continues to be our salary and benefits at 77%. Operating is a reasonable value, and capital is not necessarily in our general fund fund, but it's kept at a low amount. We, again, have been very frugal on the people that we have brought forth. General Fund full-time employees is only 10 FTEs, and enterprise employees is two. When we look at the general fund budget appropriations, it's important to remember our team members that we are backing up. So general fund competitive wage adjustment, 3.5%. Actually, the amount of plays we have counts, costs us over $2 million. We did a general fund market adjustments in the areas that we felt needed to have those adjustments. We did the general funds annual steps, which you can see are quite a bit, over $1 million. And then we did general personnel real classifications. The Commission at one time wanted us to look at all our employees, make sure we're market competitive, and that we could retain our employees. This was a directive I was given by all of the Commissioners, because we did not want to lose people. I think we have put a lot of value and money into this. So if you look at the pros impact on headcount on over 1,000 employees, we've only gone up 12. We also recommended some capital outlays, and you all are aware of the different utility funds and funds that we have. And this was, when we looked at it, Mike, myself, and Bruce, we looked at different ways, what do you need, what do you not need? And I think our department heads did a great job of trying to keep a minimal cost on capital side of the ledger. So when we look at general fund expenses, we went from 104 to a proposed budget that's only up to 111. It's $7 million, and it's a 7% increase. And I think knowing what's gone on in the last year, we all understand inflationary has really been hard on us, and issues regard that have also impacted us. Salaries and benefits, again, 77%, and you can see the rest of our outlays, repairs, maintenance, energy, a variety of different areas that are things we can't necessarily control. And as the public knows as well, costs have gone up. When we look again at revenue sources and what we benefited from, state share came up, which was helpful to us. The revenue we get from property taxes was helpful to us. And we've worked very vigorously to look at all these and see where it finally sits. Again, it sustains the expense of $111 million. Again, if you look at the different revenues that we get, property taxes are not a majority of them, and it's basically other elements of revenue that help us to maintain our city, find services we have. We've been asked by some of the Commissioners, Tim, what are we spending the money on, and what's going on in our city that's made this happen? So revenue sources, you can see, have gone up, increases, you see, state funds, fees for services, tax, property tax revenue, and property tax mill, the net of all those that come together. But we also note that we lost after COVID, we had 3.35 million, which would help our budget and revenue replacement, and that is no longer available to us. But if you look at where our expenses are, it's investment in employees, in their salaries, in their benefits. We had other services, legal, we're getting a new computer for finance, our contracts have gone up in some areas. Again, these are expenses we have to pay. Energy has gone up, inflation's gone up, and insurance has gone up. And the net of all others is only .15 million. So our total is 7.3 million, and it's mainly in our employees and our staff that we're putting our money. Next slide. Commissioner Preston asked our general fund balance percentage, and over the years, what we see is it goes up and down, up and down, and there are different areas that this actually happens. But also, in 2014, we went down one mill, because we were going a little bit higher. 2016, we went down two and quarter mills. In 2018, we went down another mill. And it's only lately, as our fund balance has gone down, we've had to have a mill levy in 2020. And at that time, we got COVID money, which bumped it. Otherwise, we would have been almost the level of the 2550 that we are now. Even with our two-mill increase in this year, we're just over what we're supposed to have in reserve, which is 25%. The other thing we have to do is utility increases, and if we look at a graphic on our utilities, there's a long-term plan and long-term graphics that you will look at, that have, every now and then, we will have an increase in some of those things because of what happens, different costs. Chemical equipment and supply costs are 25% higher than 22. Energy costs have gone up. Work force pay and benefit costs are increasing. So the Commission, we try very much not to have our utilities go up, because our residents really do not like increases. Water's up 250. Water reclamation is up 250. And in solid waste, we increased our tipping fees for commercial, but not for residents. The other issue we always look at is what are you doing with the mill levy, and what is the Commission already trying to do? And we vigorously try to keep our mill levy down, but the expenses are up this year, and I have to go out and ask for a two-mill increase. In this also, as two mills do go to the airport, that has not changed, so we will be sitting at 53 plus two. People ask me, what effect does this have on city taxes? And part of the problem on our tax statements is you have the county school board, you have park board, you have a variety of other people that are part of that. But if I put property value of your house and put what the proposed taxes with levy in, it's a modest amount of money, I think, from my perspective, of the services you Other thing, Commissioner Strand, you had asked about how we change in residential, commercial, where are we taking our bite? We are taking 52% taxes from commercial and 47% from residence. We seem to be in that range. Now, you're the envy of West Fargo, because they're about 90% residential, 10% commercial. So the beauty of the city is we have a lot of different major employers in our community that are in the commercial market, and that actually is a higher tax rate, and that helps decrease our tax burden. So what I'm asking today in the budget project is to approve the final budget and tax levies at this meeting tonight. This is a suggested motion. I open it for discussion. And our motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Preston?
I appreciate the additional information on the fund balances, and, I mean, it certainly laid out the picture pretty well in regards to the need for the additional mills. One of the things that I'm trying to understand better, and maybe it, I don't know if the rest of you are interested in this or not, but it's the debt, the debt load side, and where we are in regards to the debt that we're taking on, the debt that we need perhaps to be taking on. In regards to infrastructure, streets and highways, infrastructure, we've been falling behind just a little bit on those. We've got the Performing Arts Center, the possibility of a convention center expansion, we've got a plaza, we've got this pedestrian bridge, plus the additional funding that's probably needed for infrastructure. It would be really good, and the Finance Committee, I would assume, would probably be the place for this, that there would be some kind of plan, financial plan, for how are we going to accomplish all of this in the next 10 years? And that was my concern about the fund balances, because I saw them going down. And so is that a topic that the Finance Committee has had on its agenda? If not, should it?
Terry, you want to come up to the podium, please? So the financing, I think, Commissioner Pepcorn can speak to this, the Fargo Dome financing would be some type of tax revenue, wouldn't necessarily come from our reserve funding. And on the performing arts, it's also, it's got to be some type of public tax of some sort. There's been restaurant and alcohol tax is one option, there's lodging tax, it's one option. There's a quarter cent sales tax, that's an option. Those elements are not presently budgeted in our present budget plans, and would have to be discussion with the Commission, what's the best way of budgeting that. As far as debt capacity, I turn to Terry to explain that question.
With debt capacity, you have to consider what kind of debt it is. If it's a revenue, if it's based on revenue, and that you have a prescribed revenue that's going to pay that debt, then it's not considered as part of our limitation from the Centric Code, that we're limited to like 5% of the assessed value on general obligation bonds, because it's based on the taxes. Do you understand? So there's different types of debt, and what you can do in the capacity. But if you have a revenue source to pay the debt, that's what's taking care of the debt, taking care of the responsibility, so therefore, there's not a limitation, as long as you have that additional revenue. Do you understand?
She can, Terry, you could sit down and explain that, because we have utility debt, we have debts paid by utilities. We have different debt that is paid by a general obligation fund.
You have debt paid by your special assessment revenue, things like that. You have debt that's paid by utility.
I fully understand all of that, yes. My question was related to what revenue sources will we be looking at for these additional projects? And how do we start plotting that out for the next 10 years? It will require some kind of cash flow projections, which would probably also impact the fund balances, but we need to figure out where the revenue sources are going to come from.
Right, but you have to start with the projects. You have to line them up and determine what kind of a timeline you have on having those projects.
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
Right.
Yes.
Commissioner Kolpak?
Yeah, that's, now that I'm co-chairing the Performing Arts Center with Commissioner Pepcorn, that was one of the questions that came out of after presentations with Fargo Dome, and how we're going to public-private fund the Performing Arts Center and some of these other major capital projects, whether it's concrete, or it's, you know, some of these other bigger projects. What is the long-term strategy, and what are the priorities for those big projects? And then, how are we going to, from what revenue source? That's, that's what I would like to see.
So I have a question in regards to the Finance Committee. I just recently received the agenda, and looking at the makeup of that committee, as well as a few other committees, where we have a City Commissioner sitting. And Nancy, this might be a question for you. What triggers public open meeting requirements? No, the Finance Committee has two City Commissioners on it.
That would not necessarily trigger open meeting requirements. It depends on how the committee was formed, who is participating, staff. Committees are not necessarily open meeting requirements.
So what determines what is a staff committee versus a commission-appointed committee? This one is specifically assigned to City Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to get back to the budget? Isn't this what the, the agenda item is, the budget? How about if we talk about that? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Preston?
This, this could be an issue for later. It's just the role and the function of the Finance Committee should include strategic planning on the finance side, in my mind.
Well, I think it's a discussion for the whole Commission in some ways. You've got to decide that. I think Commissioner Strand, you're used to the school board having kind of projects, things they need to do. And I would say that we need to have a discussion, because you've got to include the public as well. So those discussions go on. But concur with Pepcorn, can we talk about the preliminary budget? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Just putting it out there, I will be putting it on a future agenda to open up our Finance Committee and PUPAC meetings to the public, as per my understanding of state statute.
Any other discussion on the budget? Commissioner Kolpak?
I have, you know, I'm a rookie Commissioner, and I have learned a lot in the last three months, and I have a lot more to learn. I appreciate the conversations and meetings I've had to understand the budget as a liaison to the three utility divisions, the communications team, and the fire department. You know, we're a growing city, and I just really want the citizens to know how thoughtful those division directors are in doing everything they can to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. Having said that, I do want to put it on the radar that, obviously, I've heard from a lot of citizens and businesses, property taxes are a concern, especially for residents on fixed income, whom I heard from many. And, you know, business, legacy businesses downtown who maybe haven't had the opportunity to participate, for instance, in Renaissance or other financing incentives, but have the impacts of property tax valuations going up as a result of those who did. And so I'll be working with, I've already set up meetings to work with staff to continue to pursue some of these ideas around property taxes, but I want to acknowledge those, those high-level items. Thank you.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. And for the record, and my vote will indicate this, I am voting for the budget. But I will be candid about my thoughts about aspects of the budget. This year's cycle was very challenging, because we had an election unfolding with people running for office. We had a finance director transition from a long-term one to a new one. We have a city administrator who, who transitioned out from full-time to this, and I'll be frank, I won't be happy next year if we're as unengaged with the budget process as we were this year. I'm just being frank about that. We were, according, typically, we're involved with our portfolio discussions. That didn't happen this year adequately, and that needs to change going forward. And for the sake of transparency, I'm this really liberal guy sometimes when it comes to things like arts or social issues. I'm a fiscal conservative when it comes to budgets. I don't know that anything I asked for in our budget got into it, because the times are so tight. I want a half a mill for public art, for example. I'd fight for that, and the value for that, and that we'd get from that, but it's not in the budget this year. Commissioner Pepcorn and I have in the past looked at and studied what, what Grand Forks does with fellowships and internship programs, where you can become an intern or a fellow and work with the mayor, work with the Commissioner. That's not in the budget. You know, so the things I asked for to get into the budget are not there. I guess there's a $50,000 allocation for opioid addiction funding, which we continue. I'm not being critical, I'm just being frank, because the reality is, our people are the most important thing we have. The reality is, our workers and the people who deliver our services is everything. If we don't have a happy workforce, or capable workforce, or competent workforce, or workforce that wants to come to work, you know, we're in trouble. So I'm deferring my personal requests for what I'd like to see as frosting on the cake and sizzle in our budget for practical realities that we need to take care of our people, and that's 77% of our budget. So benefits and salaries and wages, and protecting our employees, that's everything. But I will fight for going forward, things like art and arts, art budgeting, but this isn't the year for it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thank you. Forty-six, application of property tax exemptions for improvements made to buildings. Do I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Recommendations for appointing a Human Rights Commission. Commissioner Kolpak and Dr. Hogan worked with the Chairs and Vice Chair to figure these people out, and they're pleased with who they have appointed. I ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item three, second reading and final adoption ordinance relating to Wildlife Management Program Regulations. Nancy Morris, I believe this was a question about age.
I believe as well. There was a question presented as to, it used to be limited to persons 18 years of age or older. There were other requirements. What's presented to you today is that the regulations are governed by applicable North Dakota game and fish regulations, which would be the certifications for the hunter educations that are required, the age requirements that would be applicable to obtaining a hunting license from game and fish.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, I think so.
Christopher Cohen, I think, had the question too, if he's still about. Any other business to the Commission tonight? We have one thing we wanted to talk about. Somebody's retiring, I guess.
I'll make a motion.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote.
Motion to approve.
We have to have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I just did.
Oh, do we have a second?
A second.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Now, roll call vote.
I'm sorry.
Preston?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. I'm just so excited about the budget. Sorry, guys. You wanted?
Forgive me, I know we're, we're doing liaison updates every other, every other time now.
We do it monthly, meeting every month, we need, sorry.
Okay, so we're, but I, I got a special permission to do a liaison update, because this is the last liaison update for Terry Ludlam, and he submitted this, a reminder that you don't have to wait for spring cleanup week. The residential transfer station is available to Fargo residents from Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 4 p.m., and you can find complete guidelines on the ND.gov backslash solid waste website for the city of Fargo. But here is Director Terry Ludlam. Congratulations. He's retiring this Friday, October 7th. He's worked for the city for over 33 years, and he has overseen tremendous advances during his tenure. So congratulations, Terry. I know we only got to work together for three months, but you have great respect across the organization and across the city, and I really commend you for a job well done.
Any other news, business, birthdays?
Nope.
Nope. Move to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.